Good evening all. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Patty, would you call the roll please?
Yes ma'am, Mayor Marino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woods.
Here ma'am.
Councilmember Marciano.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Thank you. Do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications?
No ma'am.
Okay. But we do have some announcements and presentations. How fabulous is this? May I please...who's coming up? Chief Shannon, are you coming up? Recognition of the Palm Beach Gardens Police Explorers Competition.
Very proud to come before you tonight to let you know the Palm Beach Gardens Police Explorer were awarded a first-place finish on Saturday, June 23rd, in the annual Florida Association of Police Explorers State Competition. This was extra-special to us because we were the host agency and so all of the events and the competitions took place in our city at various locations throughout the city. I also wanted to give a special thanks to the other city departments, our Recreation Department, our Public Works Department, they've just been over backwards for us. This is the second of a three-year commitment that we have in hosting the competition and I don't think they're ever going to want to leave. The competition was attended by 27 different police explorer posts from law enforcement agencies throughout the state of Florida and it took place on Monday, June 18th to Friday, June 22nd. The competition consisted of scenarios that law enforcement officers experience to include responding to crime scenes, crisis negotiations, DUI investigations, and responding to in-progress calls. Palm Beach Gardens Police Explorer also took first-place overall in the pistol competition match for the first time in our post's history. Our Palm Beach Gardens Police Explorer post is comprised of males and females between the ages of 14 and 21 who have an interest in the law enforcement profession. This youth-oriented program is sponsored by Learning for Life and is affiliated with the Boy Scouts of America. Our competition team consisted of, I want to recognize them, William Buttsback, Hunter Bradford, James Ordones, Nick Baudelati, and Jason Aspramonte. They were our competition team. Hunter regrets he couldn't come here tonight because he had a work commitment. But I could not be prouder of our young men and women and what they accomplished this year and also our outstanding officers who not only mentor them but coached them throughout this event. So congratulations to them, we could not be prouder.
I mean, that's appropriate. Well, Mayor, Council. Take your seat. Good job. Take your seat. Travel safely this evening on your way. Garden Spirit Team Jeans for Means Check Presentation. Alana Rami. How are you, Alana? All right, I just want to know, hands up, staff, who did the Friday Jeans Program? Cool. Okay.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and Mr. Ferris. My name is Alana Rami. My name is Alana Rami and I am the HR Coordinator for the City of Palm Beach Gardens. I am also a part of the Employee Committee called the Spirit Team. The Spirit Team stands for Service, Pride, Involvement, Recognition, and Initiative and Teamwork. The Spirit Team's mission is to give back to the employees and the community. The team raises awareness about different charities and what they do in our community through the city's Jeans for a Means Program. With a $5 donation, employees have the opportunity to wear jeans every Friday. Once the fund reaches $500, a donation is made to the selected charity. Annually, the team raises over $6,000 for various charities such as Place of Hope, Mary's Shelter, Bush Wildlife, and Peggy Adams Animal Rescue, just to name a few. One of the local organizations recently selected was Florida Guardian Ed Leitem. Florida Guardian Ed Leitem is a partnership of community advocates and professional staff who provide a powerful voice on behalf of Florida's abandoned, abused, and neglected children. Here tonight, we have Kristy Glitz and Colleen Lacoste from Florida Guardian Ed Leitem to talk about the work their organization achieves.
Thank you, Alana, very much. Thank you, everybody, Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you. And thank you to everybody that wore the jeans. And, you know, it was thrilling to hear that everybody knew kind of about the program beforehand and knew the advocacy that we do. So that's amazing because it's with the community that we succeed. We have more kids in care than ever due to the opioid crisis. We are searching for volunteers in every aspect to advocate for those kids' best interests. They're taken out of their homes with nothing and what we do is fill that gap. We get them to...ensure that the services are there, that their best interest is met, from back-to-school stuff to clothing, to therapy, to anything that we can do with the money that we receive from such endeavors as this. So this is amazing and this helps us fulfill our mission. Thank you. Kristy, do you want to say anything?
I just want to say thank you very much for acknowledging the importance of what we do. Guardian Ed Leitem unfortunately will never go away. There always will be a child that's neglected, abandoned, or abused that we want to come and we want to help and we want to advocate for. There are 1,400 kids in the system here in Palm Beach County alone. So we thank you for taking the time and taking the effort and wearing those jeans to help us and to raise some money for the things that we need for our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of the city's Spirit Team, we would like to present a check in the amount of $500 to Florida Guardian Ed Leitem so you may continue the passionate work that you do for these children.
Can we get our staff that have donated to get in the picture too?
Yeah, of course. And any Spirit Team members in the audience, please come forward.
Alrighty then, we are on to our next agenda item and that would be items of resident interest and board committee reports. So Rochelle, you want to start?
Absolutely. Okay, so on July 2nd, I became a grandma again for the second time. I'm so excited. Cameron Jules-Litt, my son and my daughter-in-law, up in Orlando, so that was exciting. The other real exciting thing that happened this month since the last time we were here, I was accepted to the Leadership Palm Beach County Class of 2019. That program starts in August and should be a really exciting way to get to learn more about the county we live in and how all the different agencies interact with each other. So I'm real excited about that. Several months ago, a resident had made a comment that when he and his granddaughter rode their bikes over to Russo Park, there were no bike racks. And I took that to the city manager and Ron got to work and it didn't take very long and there are now bike racks at Russo Park, so that's a benefit for all of us. The other thing that I did of note, Leadership Palm Beach County had a summit on June 15th. It was a 100-day challenge program. There were three different components to it. The one I participated in was the section on Mental Health First Aid. This is a program administered and taught by Albert Jewish Family and Children's Services. It teaches a five-step program to recognize mental health issues in the workplace. The premise of it, it can also be used for members of the family and friends as well. And the idea is to get to people before things go too far. The suicide rate in the country is up dramatically. Palm Beach County is no different and they're having tremendous success with this program. So the goal is to get 100 HR Directors in the county to take the program and see where it fits in their organization and how far to extend it. We will have the details on that and I'll be bringing that to Ron and HR to see how we can participate. Thoughts and get well wishes to Sal Fasso, the president of NCNC, who underwent open-heart surgery today. We hear he's doing well and we will keep him in mind.
Okay, on the other end of the age spectrum, my son is starting college in about four weeks and we're having serious talks in my house about making sure that I don't become a grandfather. Briefly, I attended the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee, the Palm Beach Corridor Association Reception at United Technologies, the Point at Midtown Opening, the NCNC meeting, the REC Advisory Board meeting, and I also attended to a number of constituent issues. And I join Rochelle in wishing Sal Fasso a safe and quick recovery.
Thank you. Mark?
On the other side of the spectrum, my kids are still young enough to enjoy going golfing. So thanks to Sherri for giving them more lessons at the Sand Hill Crane. Kind of a quiet month in terms of events. We had a nice 4th of July, I hope everyone else had a nice 4th of July. Economic Forum, Point Midtown groundbreaking, I heard they've already sold a few units there which is pretty exciting and amazing, but they're not even up yet. Palm Beach North Chamber breakfast was actually quite entertaining, a little bit different. Swamp Classic, Mayor and I got to throw out the first pitch.
Mark did much better than I did.
He made it to the catcher but it didn't actually go over the plate, but that's okay. Representative Rick Roth and I had breakfast which was good. NCNC meeting, of course, our thoughts to Sal Fasso and his family. And probably the biggest and most exciting part of my month was a special thank you to Chief Shannon, Sister Chief Dominic Pape, Major Robert Wilson, Officer Pete Reynolds, Sergeant Robert Boshin, Training Manager Glenn Wright, and Trainer Ron Council. With all the discussions about our Resolution 26 gun control legislation, et cetera, et cetera, I wanted to take my boys to learn a little bit about gun safety, about gun responsibility, how to handle a weapon and how best to utilize it. I didn't want to be on the sidelines pretending I knew everything about how guns are handled when I generally don't. So I made an appointment with the chief and he was kind enough to bring me in and the gentlemen that I just mentioned were great, showing us some simulations, some zombie shooting which was actually pretty funny. And actually, we had a chance to fire some live rounds and it was very educational for all of us. My boys and I talked about it after the fact and I want to thank you for allowing us to do that. It does give us an opportunity to understand the issues better, so. Other than that, congratulations to you Rochelle and as your grandparent, and I really hope you don't become a grandfather anytime soon.
Carl?
All right, well, my month was kind of slow and on the other end of the spectrum, I'm not going to talk about any of the spectrums that you guys went over. What about your kids or anything like that? But I do second Matt not becoming a grandparent. Derek's great. My month was kind of slow. I did meet with the community a lot on the weapons resolution with the mothers several times, met with some of the corridor people on this issue. Ready to move forward and put it behind us, I think it's where it needs to be. I did stop over at the grand opening of the Malorca at La Posada, beautiful new building. Seniors are happy, they love to party over there. They're having a lot of fun. Other than that, I'm not going to reiterate the meetings that we all go to, breakfasts and all those things. I did meet with Rick but mine was a happy hour, so breakfast...
I have breakfast.
Yeah, he wants to meet me in the afternoon. So, see if we can keep Rick where we need him to be for the best of the city and that's about all I got to say on this month.
Okay. Here's my list. And it's small, it's small print, so let me go down in like what the fun things were. Patty, you, Kintia, Ray, did a wonderful job hosting the Florida Clerks. I wanted to thank you and you all should be very proud of our city clerk. She welcomed, how many women were there and men?
About 200 and almost 250.
Great job and they love coming here to the City of Palm Beach Gardens because we host them in such a great manner, so I wanted to just give another shout-out to you. We did have the, an interesting small business seminar here hosted in our EOC and I attended that. Transportation Planning Agency, Nick, I see you're in the audience today. We have a couple of important things to discuss. Honda Classic Cares, I don't know if anybody saw this on Facebook or on the news, but the Honda Classic Cares did two check presentations out at Sand Hill Crane. One was to our PBG YAA golf team going to Scotland. The other one was to the Tommy Morrissey Unlimited Foundation. If you don't know what that is, he's a seven-year-old born with half a right arm, I have to remember because he beat me when we had hit shots to the green. But he's a remarkable young man and the Honda Classic gave his foundation some money which the money goes to kids that are missing a limb. So if you haven't seen what they do, look them up online, it's really a wonderful foundation. So going down...I'm still looking, sorry, I'm trying to pick what's important. I do have to say the Palm Beach North State of the Chamber breakfast was quite interesting. We had it like a radio, it was like a radio program with different topics and I was invited up there to talk about transportation and mobility and data and I held up three different items of how we have data now, phone, iPad, iPad Mini, and the fact that this used to be an entire room is quite an amazing feat for us right now. And the amount of data that we generate that we don't even know we're generating is kind of scary too. Screening of On the Town in the Palm Beaches, for those of you that didn't see it, we had, PBS did a series of about eight of On the Town in Palm Beach and then they featured one in Palm Beach Gardens, so that was at PGA National. I'd like to thank the rest of the council that came to see that, it was very fun. And then we shot a little bit out at Sand Hill Crane, we want everybody to know about our golf course and our new clubhouse. Natalie Crawley, thank you for attending and being a panelist with me at the Palm Beach County Planning Council Shape-Shifting of Retail Fact and Fiction. It's another opportunity for the City of Palm Beach Gardens to show how we really do lead by example here in the city and how five of our retail centers generate 20% of the taxes paid in our city. That's a big number, so retail needs to succeed in our city because it does help our coffers and keep our taxes down for the rest of our taxpayers. Rick Roth, Legal Aides Society and Society Guardian Program, so I saw that Guardian Ed Leitem just left, but the Legal Aid Society did a little event here at the Craft House where they actually are guardians to mentally and physically disabled adults who have aged out of foster care. So monthly, they do a program where they take them out and get them to socialize a little more and I'm hoping, and I'm springing this on Ron, but I think I might have sent him an email about this, I'm hoping to arrange a tour of the police and fire station for them. Okay, thank you. And last, if you didn't see it on the news, I think I can move right into Ron's city manager report with the WPTV, Fox News...but we are, I'm done. Okay, we have one comment from the public and then we'll move on to the city manager's report. And the comment from the public is Ms. Magnuson, please state your name and address for the record.
Paula Magnuson, 3167D, Gardens East Drive. Well, I want to start out by thanking you for two things that happened this week. Apparently, we had a car go out of control on Gardens East and thankfully the bushes stopped it, but it was right at the bend and I don't know who did it from the city but someone quickly got out there and put tons of those yellow markers, so it looks like the Yellow Brick Road and there's no way they can go off path. So thank God the bushes stopped or it would have ended up in somebody's living room. That's one thing. The second thing I want to thank you for is the paving of our community, however, they only did half of it and I was told, I don't know how true it is, that it was the other half would get done next year. And the problem with that is the tar from the freshly paved driveway is like trashing the old pavement, so it doesn't look too nice and I just thought I'd bring it to your attention and possibly the city could look into getting it done before next year, please. The other item, I think I sent something in, is this horrible dumpster that we have to look at when we drive south on Gardens East Drive. Every other community around there, Glenbrook, the Gardens East Departments and Cedar Gardens, they have all beautiful enclosures where you can't see the dumpster. The reason this one bothers me is it's two buildings away from my community, which, I don't know if you can see it from that distance. This is our main entrance which I keep pristine and actually, as the president of the HOA, I go around collecting garbage cans that are left out for three days or recycling bins because I cannot stand trash. But my question is, everybody else is in compliance, why do we have to look at this driving down our beautiful street? It's horrible. So I have brought it to the attention before but I think I left something with the clerk. I don't know if you guys got it or not, but I was hoping possibly it could be addressed. Like I said, it's so close to our building, it's an eyesore. So that's it and thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, I don't need this and...
Can I enter these or do you want me to?
Okay, we are now at the city manager's report.
Thank you very much. I hope everyone had an opportunity to stop by and take a look at the electric cars that we have on display out there that we're attempting to initiate a pilot project to see how effective and efficient energy-saving electric cars would help us with our day-to-day activities. Also, we have Fire Rescues, the Fire Educational Trailer, and they were performing demos, so I just hope everyone had an opportunity to take a look at that and see what's going on. In addition to that, as you well know, I've told you over the past that we would bring back to you on occasion, give you updates on the capital improvement project regarding the surtax projects that we have. We've put together, staff's put together, a presentation including the surtax projects but a few others too that have been important that the council has appropriated funds for. So if you would please, we'll go ahead with the introductions and go ahead with the presentation.
For the record, David Reyes, Community Services Administrator. With me tonight with this presentation is Angela Brown, Deputy Community Services Administrator, and Todd Engel, City Engineer. Before I go over the projects, I would like to provide you with a brief overview of the city's capital improvement program. The city's capital improvement program is managed in a unique way. Most cities and counties have a department strictly dedicated to managing CIP. However, that's not the way we do it here in the City of Palm Beach Gardens. We do not have a capital improvement department. The whole program is run by all the departments within the city. The city CIP is a centralized unit and all the resources and support come from different departments and units throughout the city. Every department in the city, which you see all the names out there, are represented in all aspects of the CIP program, from the planning stages all the way up to the end of completion or construction. So every department is involved in this entire process. So due to the close involvement from all departments, we're able to expedite all aspects of the project which result in time and cost savings. Currently, we have 52 active projects for a total of $54.5 million, so we're going to be here a while. Tonight, we would like to just share with you some of those projects that we're working So the first project includes the municipal golf and this included the construction of 22,000-square-foot clubhouse, a state-of-the-art training center, a lighted driving range, a parking lot expansion, a new cart barn, and a new maintenance building, so all of this are happening in one site. The new clubhouse, the driving range, and the learning center are complete and are open to the public today. The parking lot and the cart barn are currently under construction. The new cart barn will replace the existing cart barn as well as provide additional space for future growth, where we're already planning for the future growth. The north, to the north, will be constructing the new turf maintenance building that will be north of the cart barn. This building will provide space for the golf maintenance equipment for repairs and storage as well as facilities for the golf staff. This building is also designed to accommodate for future goal, growth, and I just want to make a point, all the projects that you'll see here tonight and all these projects that were just listed in here, every one of these projects include not only the needs that we have today, but we have accounted for the future...
you with a brief overview of the city's capital improvement program. The city's capital improvement program is managed in a unique way. Most cities and counties have a department strictly dedicated to managing CIP. However, that's not the way we do it here in the City of Palm Beach Gardens. We do not have a capital improvement department. The whole program is run by all the departments within the city. The city's CIP is a centralized unit and all the resources and support come from different departments and units throughout the city. Every department in the city, which you see all the names out there, are represented in all aspects of the CIP program, from the planning stages all the way up to the end of completion of construction. So every department is involved in this entire process. So due to the close involvement from all departments, we're able to expedite all aspects of the project which result in time and cost savings. Currently, we have 52 active projects for a total of $54.5 million. So we're going to be here a while. Tonight, we would like to just share with you some of those projects that we're working on. So the first project includes the municipal golf, and this includes the construction of 22,000-square-foot clubhouse, a state-of-the-art training center, a lighted driving range, a parking lot expansion, a new cart barn, and a new maintenance building. So all of this are happening in one site. The new clubhouse, the driving range, and the learning center are complete and are open to the public today. The parking lot and the cart barn are currently under construction. The new cart barn will replace the existing cart barn as well as provide additional space for future growth, where we're already planning for the future growth. The north, to the north, will be constructing the new turf maintenance building that will be north of the cart barn. This building will provide space for the golf maintenance equipment, for repairs and storage, as well as facilities for the golf staff. This building is also designed to accommodate for future growth. And I just want to make a point, all the projects that you'll see here tonight and all these projects that were just listed in here, every one of these projects include not only the needs that we have today, but we have accounted for the future needs looking out 15 to 20 years out. We already know those projections, so we are taking all those into consideration. So the important things that we're building for the future, but we're using today's dollars. So it's a huge saving for our taxpayers. So for this project, staff anticipates completion of the cart barn and the parking lot by winter of 2018 and the maintenance building to follow in spring of 2019. Another project is the stormwater management system. In an effort to maintain the city's stormwater system, regular cleaning, inspecting, evaluation, and repairs of the pipeline is needed to ensure proper runoff and discharge to canal system. In 2014, the city conducted a study of the entire stormwater system and developed a seven-to-10-year maintenance and replacement program. The study allows staff to determine the best course of action and ensure that the system is maintained properly. In turn, this prevents sedimentation in our canal system, allow water to flow freely from roadways and swells, improve water quality, and eliminate costly repairs in the future. Since the program implementation, we have replaced drainage pipe at Gardens Parkway in alternate A1A with dredge and restore honeysuckle canal, installed approximately 1,400 linear feet of G O2 along the Lake Catherine Lake for bank stabilization, repaired 25 outfalls, inspected 3,600 catch spacings, repair and restore just over 1,500 linear feet of stormwater pipe, clean and televise over two miles of stormwater pipe and remove over 600 cubic feet of sedimentation. This is material that now is outside of the system so it doesn't end up in our canal system or is not reducing quality of the stormwater drainage. In 2004, the city also implemented a five-year maintenance, operations, and repairs program that consisted in forecasting and planning for the replacement of critical infrastructure in order to minimize emergency repair and provide better financial planning. We're one of the only cities, I've talked to a lot of cities in the county, and I haven't yet to meet any other city that has a program like this one, to where we're projecting out repairs are going to happen in all of our buildings. This is anything from a roof replacement all the way out to replacing a carpet in the office. No one has a program this extensive. We're projecting this out already five years in anticipation. So as part of this program, several large irrigation pumps reached their useful life and became due to replacement. City Council approximately two months ago approved the purchase of five of these large pumps throughout the city. Today, four of those five pumps have been replaced and operational, and the last one is scheduled to be completed within the next 30 days. And these pumps, although it's not something you see every day, but they're extremely critical for the maintenance, all the beautiful landscape that we have throughout our whole city, and also the many acres of turf fields that are used daily by our childrens in our programs. Now I'd like to introduce Todd Engel, City Engineer.
Good evening, Council. For the record, Todd Engel, City Engineer. I'll start off by talking about our bridge refurbishment program. Approximately six years ago, we got together and figured out how we could refurbish the seven bridges that the city owns throughout the city, and they're all listed up there. We evaluated the bridge for structural integrity, for vehicle safety, ADA accessibility, and also pedestrian access. We evaluated a funding source. We funded the bridge refurbishment program through gas tax, so it did not come out of our abhorrent tax. And to date, we've completed six of the bridges, and the last bridge is Avenue of the PGA, and that will be completed by the end of the summer. The Gardens North County District Park. To date, we've received all of our approvals for the park, for Phase One of the park, and we're currently under construction. We have also expanded the current Phase One to include two additional soccer fields, additional parking, additional lakes, and other amenities to complement those facilities. So when we are complete with this project, we will have nine full-size, state-of-the-art, lighted soccer fields, and that will help with our ever-expanding YAA soccer programs and the tournaments that will be held here in the city. The good news is, is that we're currently heavily into construction right now. We've cleared the initial 53 acres. We'll start to hopefully clear the other 12 acres for the expansion of Phase Two. Our underground pipes is going in. We're anticipating everything to be complete by fall of 2019 for all phases within this project. The municipal campus here that we're sitting in here today. It's important to note that we gave the certificate of completion to this campus in 1999. In 1999, the city had 34,000 residents. We had approximately 233 employees. Fast forward to today, in 2018, we have over 53,000 residents. We're the largest landmass city in Palm Beach County. We have over 500 employees. So you see the need for this campus to expand. And there's a lot of projects that's going to touch this campus. First project is the Johnson Dairy Improvements, which now also became the Johnson Dairy Expansion as we expand further towards I-95. We have the Gardens Park Baseball Shade and Concession Improvements. We have the Operations Center, the new Operations Center that will be located to the west of the property. This facility will take care of the Fleet and Operations Center that's currently for sale at Burns Road in Ironwood. We have the fueling station. Again, the fueling station is also located at that same facility at Burns Road in Ironwood. We'll put a new fuel station in this area. We have the expansion of the City Hall complex. We have the expansion to the police complex. We have an expansion to the fire complex. And last but not least, once we move soccer to the Gardens North County District Park, we will rehab the current soccer facilities to a state-of-the-art baseball facility. Johnson Dairy roadway expansion is currently under construction today. We have started the expansion of the parking on the south side of the road. We have started our expansion out to I-95. We are currently in the process of negotiating with FPNL to drop the power distribution system underground. With that, we'll have to drop the lights underground as well. We're also proposing to light that entire street with solar lighting, solar and LED lighting. We'll have a new turn lane on Military Trail into the project and an additional turn lane out of Johnson Dairy, northbound on the Military Trail. Landscaping, new signage, wayfinding signs, new sidewalks, pedestrian connectivity. Baseball complex. We will put in a state-of-the-art high school baseball facility with training enhancements around that facility. We'll also do a much-needed covered pitching mounds in hitting lanes. We're going to do what is called an agility field. This will be an artificial turf field that's approximately 60 yards long, and it's the new training for baseball, how they do agility. And it'll have the capability to have a 10,000-square-foot indoor state-of-the-art baseball training facility. There is not another complex that has this kind of facilities. There's not a major league facility in this county. The fueling island. We're all here on this campus. We have 80% of our employees at this campus. We have 80% of the cars on this campus. By moving the fueling island here, we're now only going to increase the capacity of both our unleaded and diesel capacity, but we're going to have the efficiency of everyone being able to fuel on this campus right where their cars are being held. And the much-needed shade structures and scoring towers at the Gardens Baseball Park. To date, we've completed all 16 of the shade structures out there. We're in the process of completing the south concession stand improvements. It'll have the ability to have shade and shelter underneath those, the ability to score baseball games on top. We've held three Cal Ripken State tournaments in the last three weeks. The Rookie State Tournament had 62 teams come use this facility, and we see nothing but praise of the improvements being done out at this site. Now I'd like to bring up Angela Long to go over the rest of our, Angela Brown, to go over the rest of our project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Angela Brown, Deputy Community Services Administrator. A space needs study that was conducted in 2016 revealed a substantial shortage in office space. In order to address this need, City Hall will be expanded by approximately 17,000 square feet. In addition to that, 30,500 square feet of the existing space will also be renovated. Currently, Fire Administration is separated with its Inspection Division located at City Hall. This project allows for Fire Administration to be relocated from Fire Station 1 to City Hall in order to make that department whole. This will also improve communications within the department as well as daily operational efficiencies. Additional meeting and collaborative spaces have also been included in the design. The estimated completion date is winter 2019. Next up is the Police Department renovations and expansion project. To accommodate the Detective Bureau crime analysis and to enhance the CSI lab, the building will be expanded by approximately 3,200 square feet on the second floor and renovating approximately 8,350 square feet. Additionally, improved security measures will be installed in the front lobby. FPNL recently upgraded the transformer in preparation for the expansion two weeks ago. This project is estimated for completion in the fall of 2019. Next up is Fire Station 1 renovations project. The fire station will be renovated by approximately 5,000 square feet. With the relocation of Fire Administration to City Hall, the Care Here Employee Clinic and Wellness Center will be relocated to this facility. This will free up space needed at Fire Station 3 for emergency management personnel and equipment as well as fire rescue training space. The invitation to bid for construction on all three of these projects closed last Friday, and the bids are currently being evaluated. We anticipate a contract award in September. The new operations center, the new two-story 39,000-square-foot operations center will be located on the east end of the municipal complex. It will house the Public Services and Public Works Departments under one roof. This critical facility is designed to withstand a Cat 5 hurricane and will house personnel and equipment pre, during, and post-storm. We are also installing solar LED parking lot lights as part of this project. Currently, the site is cleared, and we expect foundation work to begin within the next two weeks. The estimated completion date is spring 2019. The Tenor Center Clubhouse is next up. The final design includes construction of a 12,700-square-foot Key West-style clubhouse with an indoor café, sports performance room, multipurpose rooms available for rent, and outdoor dining and observation decks. The project is scheduled to be out for bid next week with a contract award in October 2018. It is anticipated that the construction will last approximately 10 months. So you're looking at about fall of next year. The A1A Beautification Project. The city obtained a $100,000 grant from Florida Highway Beautification Council through the FDOT to beautify alternate A1A from Burns Road south to the city's southern limits. This project was just recently completed. All landscaping and irrigation has been installed on time and within budget. Public Safety Training Complex, Phase One is currently under construction. This will provide public safety training and emergency preparation space supporting police and fire services. Phase One of this project includes construction of a fire drafting pit, vehicle burn prop, storage containers, and pavilion for the fire department. The K-9 training course is complete with the exception of the lighting, which will be installed by the end of next month. Updates on these projects, as well as other projects not mentioned tonight, are available on our website at pbgfl.com backslash current city projects. Also, including the next issue of the Signature City Newsletter, are updates on several of these projects. That concludes our presentation. So if you have any questions?
That was fabulous. Thank you. Do I have any questions? Okay. Ron, what's next on your?
Well, I just wanted to give you a thought here for a moment. You know, our theme here is building today for tomorrow. And we found some interesting facts that were, some of them were brought up, that back when City Hall and these buildings were built back in 1999, for instance, building permits were ranging somewhere around 3,000 a year. We estimate we'll be doing over 10,000 building permits this year. When you looked at the city population, as pointed out, it was about 35,000 in 1999. We're about 52,000, 53,000 today. It's also interesting to note that the growth in this community has been fantastic, and it's not over. For instance, we now have about 5,700 residential units that are either approved, not built under construction, or in the review process. So there's almost 6,000 residential units. Interestingly enough, there's almost 9 billion square feet of commercial that's either under construction, approved but not built, or currently under review. So when you look at that, and you look at these projects, in particular, as the city grows, the need for servicing the city grows, we're in the social service business. And to deliver those services, you need people. And we're looking at servicing at our build-out at about 65,000 people. And so, once again, we're trying to plan to be sure that we're building and considering the growth and the expansion of our city so that we don't have to do this again. And that's our goal. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. In addition to that, we've been fortunate enough to have some coverage recently that I thought would be entertaining but informative to bring to the council and the residents in the event that you haven't had a chance to see them.
There's a lot going on, right?
That's right. Anywhere you go, just around the corner, there's always something going on, usually this time of the year. Pretty good chance it might be a baseball tournament. In summertime here in South Florida, that means there's certainly no shortage of them here in Palm Beach County. Some of the biggest tournaments in the nation looking for their next top prospect, or for the little guys, a possible trip to the Cal Ripken World Series. Gardens Park home to the Cal Ripken State Championships this afternoon. Team as far as Key West competing in the state semis, looking for a championship game to be played tomorrow. The ultimate prize, a trip to Virginia for the Cal Ripken Regional Tournament, and they could go on to play in the Cal Ripken World Series. And for the tournament, just fun to see the kids compete with such high stakes on the line.
Well, we always appreciate the job that Palm Beach Gardens does in hosting our state tournaments. And they, once again, have done a great job. Teams love coming here to Palm Beach Gardens. The facilities are great, the people are great, and it's not a hard sell to get people to come here.
Speaking of house fires, today Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue, along with the Red Cross, handed out free smoke detectors to families in the Meadows Mobile Home Park.
Well, today we partnered with Red Cross and we partnered with the staff at the Meadows here to do installation of our smoke detectors and let our residents know how important and safe it is to have smoke detectors in their home.
Now, not only did they hand out those free detectors, but they also installed them for free.
We would like to be the pilot city for this program in the area.
The mayor of Palm Beach Gardens, talking about city vehicles that drive themselves. Now, while they haven't made the switch just yet, they have gone ahead and made strides in that direction. News Channel 5's Jillian Idol, live in Palm Beach Gardens tonight with why the city's ditching the gas pumps for charging stations. Jillian?
Kelly, these are the cars here right behind me that are going to be on those city roadways. They already actually started driving in the past two weeks, and the city says it's part of its green initiative, and it's going to start saving you, the taxpayer, a bunch of money.
The electric car runs just like your regular automobile without the gas and without the gas-burning motor.
It was an easy switch for the City of Palm Beach Gardens.
Having vehicles repurposed for a completely different use that normally the public wouldn't see.
As city cars need to be phased out, they are replacing them with electric cars. Right now, there are eight, including five for the fire department. But there's plans for another five to be added to the fleet in October.
Well, you never want to spend more taxpayer dollars than you have to. So this is our way of saving money for our taxpayers, and it's also our way of keeping the city green.
Thanks to a lease program, the change isn't costing you a dime. In fact, it's saving the city nearly $4,000 in gas a year.
So they don't need long range. They're just driving in local streets and doing inspections.
While electric cars are nothing new, the city says it's the first step to leading the way for future technology.
We're not there yet. I don't know when we will be there. But we're investigating so that when the time comes, we will be the first doing it.
Well, they are continuing to work towards those driverless cars. They are trying to cut costs anywhere they can. Now, I want to go ahead and show you these lights here in the City Hall parking lot. These ones right here are LED, and they say they're also making the switch for about 1,000 other streetlights throughout the city to save nearly $24,000 a year. So for details on this project, just go ahead and visit our website. That's wptv.com. That's wpTV.com and click on the story. Live tonight in Palm Beach Gardens, Jillian Idol, WP.
With that, I just wanted to bring you up to date on what's happening in the gardens, at least partially of what's going on, and let you know, I hope you're as proud as I am of those people sitting here and those people that are out there providing those services to the citizens of Palm Beach Gardens and our visitors. And I couldn't be prouder. They work together well as a team, and they pull off the impossible on a daily basis. And I hope you appreciate what we've presented here to you tonight to keep you updated and informed of what's going on in your city.
Thank you, Ron, very much, and also staff for putting, it was less than 24 hours when we talked to WPTV about coming out, and it was great to have all the information ready for them, so I appreciate that.
The last item I have would be to call Chief Shannon up to talk to you about the
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Clint Shannon, Chief of Police. We wanted to inform you, the Police Department is currently conducting an awareness campaign to inform the public that our Northcom 9/11 dispatch center, along with others throughout Palm Beach County, are now capable of receiving text messages in the cases of emergencies. If you're in a situation in which you cannot make a phone call, texting provides a means for us to provide emergency services to you. We put some flyers on the table over there for the public, and we're going to continue our campaign to inform them further. However, there are some drawbacks to texting to 911. In the case of emergency, a voice call is definitely preferred by us. Some of the drawbacks with texting is it requires a text or a data plan. Your location is not automatically dispatched to us, and it's not automatically known to us where you're at. Text messages also take longer to transmit and don't contain specifics that we normally would ask. Also, photos and videos and attachments cannot be sent. But if you are in a situation which cannot make a phone call, we certainly urge anybody to text us because those situations will occur. Our motto's been, "Call if you can, text if you can't." So we're going to continue, and hopefully the technology gets better and better with this information as we move forward. But we've been set up since April to receive texting to our 9/11 center. To date, we've received a total of 48 texts. Luckily, none were actual emergencies. Some were some routine requests for calls for service, but a vast majority of them were either test calls or accidentally sent to us. But we are getting out to the public and we are set up to receive that texting. We just want to keep you informed of that also. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are now, after almost an hour, to our consent agenda. So may I have, anybody pulling anything from the consent agenda? Are we all good? Speak now? Okay, good. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I would actually like to read one of the resolutions. I didn't have to, but I would like to read the Resolution on Home Rule. So Resolution 201802, a resolution of the Palm Beach County League of Cities, Inc., honoring 50 years of municipal home rule in the Florida Constitution and committing to an educational initiative to help Floridians understand this beneficial right, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Whereas Florida voters placed municipal home rule powers into the Florida Constitution on November 5, 1968, during the regular elections, as an amendment to Article 8. And whereas this power has enabled each city, town, and village across the Sunshine State to consider, adopt, revise, or remove its own laws without the need to seek legislative permission from the state, and has further served as the foundation upon which every municipality builds its governmental structure. And whereas the political climate within the Florida Legislature has recently included many attacks on these powers, I'll repeat that. Whereas the political climate within the Florida Legislature has recently included many attacks on these powers, and whereas grassroots measures calling such actions wrong and declaring that local decisions being made at the local level by local officials must continue so that all legislators clearly understand Florida's home rule as a constitutional power and one upheld in state statutes. And whereas a 50th anniversary is a fitting time for all municipalities to engage their respective citizens, to educate them about the Florida Constitution and local laws so that all Floridians may continue to receive the many benefits of home rule. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Directors of the Palm Beach County League of Cities, Inc., that Section 1, this anniversary presents a tremendous opportunity to educate all citizens about Florida's Constitution, municipal government, and home rule authority, and that all necessary resources shall be provided for such public information. Section 2, the Palm Beach County League of Cities, Inc., will actively challenge all efforts to reduce or erode this cherished right and further employ all efforts to ensure state and federal government partners understand that a one-size-fits-all approach to governance is not in the interest of Florida citizens. Section 3, the tradition of local decision-making in Florida is essential to protect as it provides each municipality the ability to preserve and enhance the myriad characteristics that make each one uniquely special and that maintains its quality of life. Section 4, the Palm Beach County League of Cities, Inc., will include this information on its website and in as many outreach venues as possible. Section 5, the Palm Beach County League of Cities, Inc., encourages all municipalities to pass similar resolutions honoring 50 years of municipal home rule in the Florida Constitution and committing to an educational initiative to help Floridians understand this benefit, I'm sorry, this beneficial right, and to transmit certified copies of such resolutions to the Florida League of Cities, Inc. Section 6, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption by the Board of Directors, passed and adopted this 27th day of June 2018, Board of Directors, Palm Beach County League of Cities. Thank you. All right, we are now on to... I know, there's so much paperwork right here. Public hearings. Tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following case, Resolution 36, 2018, miscellaneous amendment. This means that the City Council is required by law to base its decisions on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a comment card and give it to the city clerk. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening in any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Patty, may I have you read the title, please?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution 36, 2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a miscellaneous amendment to allow the existing gas station canopy to be illuminated and to allow additional signage in order to rebrand the Northlake-Sonoco Gas Station to a BP Gas Station, which property is located on the northwest corner of Northlake Boulevard and I-95, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing waivers, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing. Have there been any expertises?
No. I spoke with Kevin about this issue.
Okay. All right. Do we have a staff presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Dawn Sonnenborn with the Planning Department, and I have been sworn in for Resolution 36, 2018. This is a request from GK LLC, which is Kevin Dalton's company, for approval of three waivers as part of the Sonoco to a BP rebranding for a gas station on Northlake Boulevard and I-95. There's three waivers. One is to allow the gas station canopy to be illuminated. The other is for an additional sign on the east side of the canopy, and one additional sign on the convenience store that's underneath the gas canopy. This is the site. It's on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, on the west side of I-95. And this shows just an example of the rebranding. The current Sonoco has a blue theme, you can see here, and this is just an example of the BP rebranding, which is white and a green theme. These are the waivers that I've already mentioned. So the first waiver is for the canopy, the gas station canopy. The code allows a sign to be on one side. He is going to have a BP logo only, no lettering, which is an example of it down here, facing Northlake Boulevard. So the waiver is for an additional sign on the canopy on the east side that faces the exit ramp of I-95. Also, a waiver for an additional sign on the convenience store. The convenience store has two doors, one on the east and one on the west, so this is an additional BP to-go sign over that doorway on the west side. The illumination is for three sides of the gas canopy. It is a very thin LED light bar that goes within a green vinyl casing, part of the BP branding, only on three sides. As justification of the waiver, Mr. Dalton is going to be adding enhanced landscaping. The site is already well landscaped, but he's going to be enhancing it further with some annual planting beds. This is along Northlake Boulevard at the entry. Around the monument sign, also on Northlake Boulevard, a nice big landscaping bed there for annuals. And this photo here, where my cursor is, is looking from the I-95 off-ramp. The east side of the project has a fence, and so there's going to be a nice hedge material all along that east side, a nice flowering hedge for additional landscaping. This site already has an existing car wash, and he's also going to be adding six large potted plants with Christmas palms to provide some additional enhancement around the waiting area for the car wash folks that are there. We've looked at the waiver analysis. The low illumination of the canopy helps with the SEPTED principles, tubified wayfinding, which is advocated by our Police Department, as well as additional signage over the western entry door to help people with wayfinding to get to the door on the west side. And the improved landscaping will enhance the site and make it look really, really nice, along with the branding. The ad has been placed and signage has been noticed on the property. Planning and zoning recommended approval at their June 19 meeting, and staff recommends approval of Resolution 36, 2018.
Thank you. I have no cards on this. Kevin, do you want to say anything?
No, the staff has been phenomenal on this, by the way. I just was asking a question, but they've worked tirelessly on this and other issues we were going through with the rest of the car wash area, trying to make sure it matches and it looks cohesive. And so, we're there now, and this has worked out wonderfully. And again, I know every time I come in, I praise the staff, but they do a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I will close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second, please?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 36, 2018.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Bring it back for discussion. Any discussion?
Sure. It's beautiful. And Kevin Dalton and GK LLC is exactly the type of business that we're seeking to attract into Palm Beach Gardens. They're responsible, they work well with staff, and they provide an excellent product. An example of their work is the gas station just outside of Frenchman's Reserve. This was an old beat-up gas station, and now it's really, really nice. They do high-quality work, and I look forward to the rebranding and the refurbishment of this facility. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
I'm just excited that we're going to have another new building on Northlake to help with the beautification of the street, and I thank you for going ahead and going forward with this.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate you saying that, and I promise, within the next 10 years or so, we'll look at maybe tearing that down and putting a nice new facility on that location.
Carl, Mark? All right, just one question.
We'll thread that, yep.
Kevin, you got to clean the sidewalk.
Is the sidewalk?
In the picture, the sidewalk looked pretty crummy.
Oh, from the picture, sure, sure. Actually, it's your sidewalk.
No, wait, Natalie shaking her head.
I don't know, I was just kidding on that.
We haven't got to the all in favor yet, it's just cleaning the sidewalk.
Well, no neon. I didn't put neon up. It is LED.
All right, so I think we're ready for a vote. No, wait, we already did the motions. Are we into our vote now, Max? Okay. Thank you, if we have a motion. Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
And thank you very much again. Thanks, Kevin.
All right, we are now on to Resolution 31. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 31, 2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a proposed maximum millage rate for the City of Palm Beach Gardens for fiscal year 2018, 2019, setting the date, time, and place of the first budget hearing, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. Hi, Alan, how are you?
Fine, how are you? Good evening, for the record, Alan Owens, Finance Administrator, and I'll be presenting Resolution 31, 2018, before council tonight. Resolution 31 is the first step in the annual process of the budget adoption that's set forth by Florida statutes. The main purposes are twofold, to set the maximum millage rate for next year and also to set the date and time of the first public hearing. That information will go, be transmitted to the property appraiser. They, in turn, put that on the notice of proposed taxes that will be mailed out to all taxpayers next month, in August. So just a quick summary, what we're proposing, the proposed operating millage rate that staff is recommending for next year, no change to the operating rate, which is 5.55, so we're proposing that that rate stays the same. Debt service, however, is proposed to go to .0503, so that would be a total millage of 5.6003. That's down from the current total millage rate of 5.6678. The proposed maximum operating millage rate of 5.55 is about 4.4% above the rollback rate that's calculated to be 5.3154. And as you know, the rates that are set tonight are the maximum rates, and of course, they cannot be raised but could be lowered during the budget hearings. In addition, we must notify the county of the date, time, and place of the first public hearing, and of course, these dates cannot conflict with hearings that the county and the school board hold. And you can see before you the dates that they are holding their hearings, so staff is recommending that the date for the first public hearing be held on September 6, 2018, which actually coincides with the normal date of our regular scheduled meetings. So staff is recommending that council approve Resolution 31, 2018, setting a maximum operating millage of 5.55 and a debt service millage of .0503, and setting the date for the first public hearing on September 6, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. A couple items to note, with respect to the debt service millage, fiscal year 19 is the last year that we will be assessing a debt service millage. All of the general obligation debt will be paid off next fiscal year, so starting in fiscal year 2020, there would be a zero debt service millage. And as far as the detailed operating budget, we're putting the final touches on that as we speak tonight and tomorrow. Hopefully, Monday or Tuesday, we'll be ready to post the final detailed line item budget for council's review and for public review. We're just finalizing, again, the sheets and then the transmittal memo that always accompanies it, which is a summary of everything. So with that, then I'll open it up for any questions council may have.
Thank you. Do I have? Do I have questions? Down there, any questions? No, okay, good. Make, may I have a motion in a second? Because I'm out of order, I think.
We need two motions. We need a motion to set the tentative millage rate, and that needs to be done. We need a motion to recommend setting the tentative millage rate of, general operating millage rate of 5.55 mils and a debt service millage of .0503 mils.
I'll make a motion to accept the tentative millage rate at 5.55 and debt service at .0503.
Do they have to be separate, Max?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we'll just do the first one then.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so all those in favor of the 5.55?
Aye.
Okay, you can make the second motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the debt service millage of .0503 tentative.
You did that already in the same one. What we need now is just a motion to set the date, time, and place of the first public budget hearing.
I'll make a motion to set the first public hearing on, on the budget on September 6, 2018, at the city council chambers.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
7:00 PM.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Just a motion to pass the resolution.
And now what?
Just a motion to pass the resolution.
Okay, and may I, may I now have a motion to pass the resolution?
I'll make a motion to pass the resolution.
And may I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Okay. We are now on to resolution 39, resolution 40, and I would like to invite Nick Uren up from the Transportation Planning Agency. May I first have Patty read the title, though?
Resolution 39-2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, authorizing payment of per capita member dues to the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency commencing in fiscal year 2019 and every year thereafter, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Okay, and although we are presenting, Nick is going to do a presentation of both, we will be voting on these separately, correct?
And the titles will be read separately.
Okay, thank you. All right. Name and address for the record, Nick.
Sure. Nick Uren, and again, I have the pleasure of serving as the director for the Palm Beach Transportation.
Speak louder, they can't hear you.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how close I needed to get to the microphone. So I get to serve as the director for the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency, and again, my name is Nick Uren. Madam Mayor, council members, Vice Mayor Woods, thank you for having me tonight, it's a pleasure to be here. I'll mention upfront, if I seem slightly nervous, it's because I had to put out a house fire on my way into the council meeting. The mobile training facility is fantastic. It was so, it was so lifelike. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of the efforts that your staff is going to train your, your city on how to respond to those types of crises. I also want to mention, I am a leadership Palm Beach County graduate, class of 2006.
2010.
Love the program, very highly recommend it, and I did learn quite a bit about Palm Beach County in that program. And then lastly, wanted to mention, as we're kicking off, and it is a very relatively short presentation, that I am excited about your electric car initiative, but one of my roles at the TPA is to spend the gas taxes that you will no longer be paying when you refuel those electric cars. So one of our challenges, not only locally but nationwide, is to determine how we are going to sustainably fund our transportation infrastructure and services as more and more people, more and more communities are migrating away from internal combustion engines and into those electrically fueled vehicles, electrically powered, I should say, vehicles. So we're going to be talking quite a bit about that in the coming, coming months and years, as to how to sustainably fund transportation. All right, so that's my preamble, love the conversation so far, I just wanted to get right into that. What, who is the TPA? So we are a board of 21 locally elected officials, and your representative on the TPA governing board is your mayor, Madam Maria, Madam Marino, and our mission at the TPA is to collaboratively plan, prioritize, and fund transportation. We do that for all of Palm Beach County, we allocate those federal and state gas tax dollars, federal 18 cents per gallon, state 25 cents per gallon, as well as additional transportation-related fees that are charged by the state of Florida, motor vehicle registration fees, rental tax surcharges, and some document stamps related to real estate transactions are also allocated to transportation. All of those dollars get churned into a pot, and then we get to decide as a governing board, the elected officials that I work for, how to spend those monies. How do we spend them? Well, we spend them in ways that create a safe, efficient, connected, and multimodal transportation system. That's our countywide vision for the transportation system, and it's a shared vision with our partners to the north and south of us as well, both in Broward and Miami-Dade County. The TPA has been helping our local communities make decisions that matter for the past several decades. The TPA was actually formed as a metropolitan planning organization back in 1977, with the primary role of reacting to the big projects that the state government wanted to undertake in local communities, giving the local governments a voice to be able to say yes or no to projects that the state DOT came up with. Now we have some proactive funding allocation authority as well, so we don't just say no or yes to big, to big projects, we can also help implement locally identified projects through the TPA's planning process and our municipal partners. We are focused at the TPA on constructing complete streets. Complete streets is a concept, a term that I would love for you to become familiar with if you're not already. Complete streets means you're designing your transportation facilities and operating them to enable safe access for all users, especially pedestrians and bicyclists, those most vulnerable users on our transportation system, while still accommodating the motorists and transit riders regardless of their age or ability. And you can see this picture right here in the City of Palm Beach Gardens has clearly identified spaces for the pedestrian, for the bicycle, and for the motor vehicle. That's how we want to see our facilities designed, constructed, and operated. We are passionate about safety. In fact, earlier this year, in response to a federal requirement to establish safety targets for all of Palm Beach County, the TPA governing board in February adopted what they call Vision Zero, which means that our target for fatalities and serious injuries that are related to transportation is zero. We want to design our facilities, we want to educate the users of our facilities, and we want to enforce the laws that govern how people behave on our transportation facilities so that no one dies and no one is seriously injured when they're traveling on our roadways, in our transit system, on our airports, seaports, et cetera. We are striving to equip our local elected officials, you as council members, to lead this conversation well. We've created an elected official handbook that explains in high-level terms the funding resources available to us, as well as how to make best advantage of those funding resources to implement projects in your local communities. We've also created what we call TPA member profiles that highlight demographic data, roadway ownership information, so when you get those constituent calls saying, "Clean that sidewalk," you will know right from our demographic profile information that North Lake is owned by Palm Beach County, and they're the ones responsible for cleaning that sidewalk. We want to make sure that you know who to, who to direct those calls to, so that you can make those, make those modifications happen and be responsive to your constituents, as well as where are your pedestrian and bicycle facilities, where are the transit lines and transit stops in your community, and we even go so far as to tell you exactly what kind of transit amenities and how many users are using those transit stops within your communities. And then lastly, we have a series of maps that shows you which transportation projects and services are going to be built in your backyard in the next five years, regardless of whether they'll be built by the city through your surtax program or your capital improvement program, by the county through their portion of the infrastructure surtax revenues doing some of their maintenance work, or their own road capacity initiatives, or by the state, constructing major transportation projects in your area. Quickly, why does Palm Beach Gardens matter to the TPA? Well, you've already heard a few times this evening that you are the largest city in Palm Beach County by land area. You are certainly a growing city, and one of our jobs in investing in transportation is in responding to anticipated growth, building for tomorrow, today. I don't know if I summarized that quite right, but it's similar to that. You are an economic engine for northern Palm Beach County. You are a regional hub of connections by both land, water, and air. You are a mobility planning leader. Your initiatives in this city to proactively identify what you want your transportation infrastructure to look like, and then identify ways to allow your development community to partner with you in funding those infrastructure improvements. You are a leading example to the way cities should be planning for infrastructure investments in Palm Beach County, and you are the home of one of our future Tri-Rail stations. We are hopeful and looking forward to the day when we can cut that ribbon on a Tri-Rail station here in Palm Beach Gardens.
Did you find us the money for that yet?
We're working on it. Why does the TPA matter to Palm Beach Gardens? Because in fact, we are not just a planning partner, we are a funding partner. We are an entity that can help bring dollars to initiatives that the city wants to see, things like adaptive traffic signals that respond to changes in traffic patterns that we've been installing, we've already installed on North Lake Boulevard, will be installing on PGA Boulevard, funding for that Tri-Rail station, as well as funding for the FEC Quiet Zone improvements. When Brightline Phase 2 comes online north of West Palm Beach and starts connecting the Brightline service from South Florida to Central Florida, one of the initiatives the TPA governing board has supported is to allocate additional dollars to the rail corridor to build what are called supplemental safety measures, so that the rail corridor is not just safe as required by Federal Rail Administration, but it has additional safety equipment in place at the crossings to allow our local cities to request removal of the train horn. So the train horn is a reinforcing safety feature that notifies people waiting at the crossings that a train is really coming, and if you put these extra safety measures in place at enough of the crossings, you can ask the railroad to stop blowing their horn as they travel through your cities. Very important quality-of-life improvement that's available to you once that Brightline Phase 2 project is constructed and their safety improvements are in place. We're also your liaison to the state DOT, to the county, and to your neighboring cities, helping you influence the design of the I-95 interchange projects that are coming up, advance the construction of the Congress Avenue extension, get involved in and make sure the full impacts of the State Road 710 widening project are understood and mitigated on adjacent communities like Steeplechase, understand what is planned for investment at the North County Airport, and make sure that you are fully informed on that project and what they're trying to accomplish, as well as how to mitigate those impacts, and to give you a clear and loud voice in regional transportation matters, like how we design roads that you are not responsible for but that you are affected by, the county roads and the state roads that pass through your municipal boundaries, to advance this concept of mobility fees, to again, allow development, community growth, to pay for not just the road capacity infrastructure that we would like to, that we would like to expand, but also those pedestrian, bicycle, and transit services and facilities that we would like to invest in, in our communities, to help you influence the decisions about transit services that are going to be made, and to promote safe routes to school, infrastructure, and services to allow our children to pass to and from their places of education in the safest manner possible. Well, where are we going as a TPA? The reason for, that I'm here this evening is that back in fall, in September of 2017, the TPA governing board passed a resolution that said, "We desire to empower all of our members to lead in the conversation about where to spend transportation dollars. We want to avoid undue influence by any one member, and we want to maximize the flexibility to the TPA to respond to the needs of its local communities and plan for transportation." In short, because we're hosted by Palm Beach County, to accomplish those three things, we were asked to take steps to transition the agency from being hosted by the county, where the county had a bit more influence over the decisions that were being made, to become an independent agency that could be more responsive to all of its members, primarily growing the voice and influence of our municipal members. Our ask of you, primary ask, is to just participate, to get involved in the conversations that we're having, the decisions that we're making, exercise your municipal voice at our TPA board meetings. Your mayor is our vice chair now, she's an active participant in the conversation, it's wonderful. We want all of our elected officials in all of our municipal communities to really engage in this discussion. We also want you to know that we are requesting project submittals to the TPA annually. We operate two discretionary funding programs. We call one our Transportation Alternatives Program. We give out up to a million dollars on a reimbursement grant basis for non-motorized infrastructure, pedestrian sidewalks, and bike lanes, those kinds of safety initiatives. We also take applications for what we call our Local Initiatives Program every year. We give up to $5 million for a broad range of transportation infrastructure projects, from complete streets to adding turn lanes, to introducing traffic signals, to modifying, I think the PGA Boulevard Adaptive Signal System is an example of that, to introducing technology to allow our existing infrastructure to operate as efficiently as possible. We are also your opportunity to help you, we exist to help you influence those DOT and county projects that are going to be undertaken within your municipal boundaries, as well as transit service investments and modifications that are coming in this area. Our second ask of you is, in order to maximize the effectiveness of our agency, we are asking you to budget for and approve member dues in fiscal year 19, as the first year we would ask the city to contribute those, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. And then the last thing is, we're going to ask you to approve your second resolution that I'm here for tonight, and that's the line of credit agreement. So let me explain the member dues in a little bit more detail, and then we'll talk about this credit agreement. Why do we want member dues? Well, we are a federal grant-funded agency, which means that almost all of the revenue we have available to us comes from federal grants, which is wonderful, but has restrictions. And so in order to maximize the effectiveness of our agency and allow for expenditures of some dollars that are not federally reimbursable, we're asking for member dues on a per capita basis from all of the governing board entities that have voting membership on the TPA. So all 13 of our cities, the county, and the port of Palm Beach are all being requested to contribute. This will allow us to maximize our effectiveness as we compete for discretionary grants, like the federal build program, which used to be called the Tiger Grant, like an FTA New Starts or Small Starts Grant, which is the kind of funding we would pursue to introduce Tri-Rail service to the gardens, like a rail infrastructure safety grant, or what they call Chrissy, or even a Smart Cities Initiative, which is something that I believe the North Palm Chamber is positioning itself to pursue, and we would be an entity that would help get those federal discretionary dollars to this part of Palm Beach County to help make our system operate as efficiently as it can. We would also allow, these member dues would allow us to improve our public engagement and participate in some promotional activities, and so give out some promotional items to help our public know who we are and engage in the planning process, and it would enhance our staff performance, our attraction and retention rates, to allow us to pay for some things for staff development that are not federally reimbursable. So I'm going to stop there. That's the request for your first resolution on the agenda, that's the member dues item, and I'm going to allow any questions on that before I go into the second item.
Any questions? No?
I'll, I'll ask one or two, just for clarification, for the questions that I did ask actually this morning. The 10 cent per capita number, where did the data come from? It said the Bureau of Economic and Business Research, and those numbers are based on...
2017 population estimates.
That come from the number of water meters, I understand, in the...
Oh, that's a tricky question. I don't know the answer to that. But their guess was, in 2017, the year population was 52,910, I believe.
I did ask that question this morning, and I wanted to know how close it was to where the city actually thinks its population is, and it's...
I think you think you're right around 53,000, as of today.
Natalie assured that it was a very close, close number, and that they, it's based on the number of water meters, and that's checked yearly, and the city checks back on that. And the other question I had was, it's actually on the second part, so I'll wait till the second part on that.
Okay, any other questions?
I do have a question, Nick, if you don't mind. The budget for the TPA as a whole, the annual budget, is it changing now that the TPA is going to become a separate entity?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Simple answer to a complex question, I suppose. And by how much, and is that what you're expecting to be covered by the membership dues from each of the cities?
No, not at all. Membership dues are only for the items shown on your screen right now. The advocacy expenses that we would incur, today we don't pay any advocacy costs. We don't hire anyone, we don't do any advocacy work at all. The public engagement promotional items that we hand out, today we have a nominal amount of reserve funds that are not federal, and we use those to buy maybe $10,000 or $15,000 worth of stuff that we hand out at events, that we go to, little trinkets that say, you know, bike lights and headlights and taillights that have the TPA's name and logo on them. And then the professional dues membership, again, we pay that out of reserve funds. So this, the dues would only raise for us around 130,000 a year. It's not a substantial amount of money, but it's enough, I think, to, to make a difference when it comes to that advocacy goal.
Okay.
So unrelated to transitioning to independence, we, we would like to have member dues even if we were not an independent agency, and we're only going to be using the dues on these items.
And you said there was 13 municipalities plus two entities that, separate entities that would be...
County and port.
County and port.
So our board, the 21, I don't think I said this very clearly... So, our board, the 21, I don't think I said this very clearly, or forgot to say it at all. Our 21 governing board members, our five of the seven county commissioners, 15 municipal representatives from our 13 largest cities, Boca and West Palm each have two voting members on the governing board, and one port commissioner. So, that's how we get to that 21, and it's 13 cities, one county, one port.
Now, there's 39 cities or municipalities, but they're not all members of the TPA.
No.
And so, everybody that is currently on the board, I assume every municipality is comfortable with participating in this?
Well, we're making a request just like this of all of those 13 municipalities, as well as the county and the port. Several of them have already acted to endorse this request and budget for these member dues. Some of them are later this summer, in later July or early August meetings.
Thank you.
Carl?
Thank you. Good presentation, but I do have a question. You had mentioned that there is some, possibly some negative influence or something by, or some positive influence by pulling away from the county hosting the TPA. Can you explain why, and what's the benefits to the local municipalities by not being hosted in a county facility? Or do they have too much influence over where the money's directed? Or can you expand on that?
Well, it will really be more relevant to the second item, and I'm going to get kind of stuck, and I can talk you through that, but yeah, if you want to talk just about the member dues, then I think it would be helpful to let me, you guys kind of dispatch of that one first, and then we can talk about the loan agreement.
So, does anybody have any other questions? I think this is a great move for us. We do need a little independence, and that's what this helps us do. So, I would need a motion and a second.
I did ask also this afternoon which budget this comes out of, and if we're prepared to do this, and I was told it does come out of the council budget, and the funds have been put into the budget for next year without affecting any of the other monies that we need for other activities, so.
It's a relatively small ask, so. Well, Maria, you're on the board, and you've been on the board for a while. Do you have an, would you like to share an opinion?
I think this is something that is very important to do. I believe, and I hate to use the word "I," as a group, the TPA will have better funding opportunities in the future by being an independent agency, not under the auspices of the county. We are right now under, Nick's budget has to get reimbursed from the county. Everything he does has to go through the county. So, by doing this, we free ourselves up, and there's actually money available to us, different funds available to us, that as an individual entity, we are able to access, but as an entity that comes under the county, we are not. Did I say that accurately?
With the exception of the reimbursement part, I'll talk more about that in the next slide, but absolutely, we expect to be much more competitive and able to draw dollars to this region as an independent agency.
And efficient, too, because I'll give you a perfect example. I went to Toronto last year as a TPA representative, and I had to get reimbursed from the county. It took me five months to get reimbursed, and I put out like two grand on that, something like that. So, this is something that's a little, we don't have to go through the county to get reimbursements, and it makes us more efficient.
Apparently, I'm also here to publicly apologize for the delay in that reimbursement.
No, it wasn't your fault.
I'm sorry it took so long.
So, I guess the other question is, what other entities are you able to draw dollars from, or what other entities can you ask for grant dollars from by not being affiliated with another entity or agency? I mean, are there federal systems, or is there private entities that are looking to fund?
Well, so, the two are not inseparable. The member dues, again, I think is an important step because we want to be able to do, to perform advocacy activities for the TPA. So, as an entity that is hosted by Palm Beach County today, when we said, "We want to have advocacy funds," they said, "We don't need that. We already have an advocacy budget at the county. We will just use our budget to accomplish the purposes of the TPA." But the reality is, they don't do that. They use their advocacy budget to accomplish the purposes of the county, which, if they are not fully aligned with our municipal members, doesn't allow the TPA to be accountable to the majority of its governing board members.
Okay. Well, I ask these questions mainly because, you know, we, as a city, are going to be looking at all sorts of different changes coming on potentially in the future, and the TPA is a big part of that, so I'm just making sure that I understand how the TPA's new relationship with the city is going to benefit us going forward, and it seems fine. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nick. So, did I get a motion and a second yet?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 39, 2018.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
And since we've already done our discussion, may I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. Patty, would you please read Resolution 40?
Resolution 40, 2018, a resolution, the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement for administrative services with Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency, TPA, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. Okay. So, we have a second presentation, second part of your presentation?
Just one slide.
That's it?
Yep. Here's the way it works. We are federal grant reimbursed, which means we have to spend somebody's dollar first. We spend dollars on payroll, on benefits, on consultant contracts, on planning studies, whatever it is that we are on our rent and our utility payments and all those things. We accumulate all those invoices, and then we submit them once to the federal government, and they give us a reimbursement check. Today, the dollar we spend to operate is a county dollar. They don't charge us interest. They don't charge us, yeah, they don't charge us interest, but they do charge us hosting services for the space that we occupy, the accounting system that we have to use in there, you know, that gives you five-month reimbursements, the IT services that we receive from them, all those things. They do charge us for all of those things, but they don't charge us interest on the money. In exchange for providing us with their dollars, which we then give back to them when we get those reimbursement checks, they require every dollar we spend to be subject to county rules and regulations. They also say that although I report to the governing board of the TPA, and that's who I take my day-to-day direction from, that the county administrator, because they are fronting the money, is able to fire me or any one of my staff members because they think we're not performing the tasks that we're supposed to from a county perspective, which means that we are not able, essentially, I have to work for two masters. I have to work for the TPA Governing Board, which is municipal elected officials and county commissioners and a port commissioner, but I also have to work for the county administrator. So, we said, "Well, that doesn't seem like a workable relationship. I should be accountable only to the TPA Governing Board. Would you be willing, county, to just loan us money but allow us to be fully accountable to the governing board?" And they said, "No. If you want our money, you have to play by our rules." So, what we're seeking to do is to separate from the county, but in order to do that, we need someone or someones to loan us money, which we will fully refund with a payment to the people loaning us that money to offset any staff costs that you would incur in the provision of that funding to us. So, what we're asking for is four to six of our cities to loan us up to $300,000 once. You would give it to us. We would put it in our operating fund. We would spend it. We would get reimbursed from the federal government. We'd spend it again. We'd get reimbursed. We'd spend it again. The cycle just kind of goes through. We would ask you to allow us to keep that money for five years. In exchange for that, we would give you an audited financial statement that demonstrates that we're only using those dollars for bona fide government purposes, to perform the transportation planning that our agency is charged with, and that we would compensate you in exchange for the provision of those funds and to offset any staff costs that you would incur at the rate of $6,000 per year. We're asking you to loan us that money for five years. At the end of five years, you would either say, "This system seems to be working pretty well. Keep our money. Keep paying us five grand a year, or six grand a year," or you would say, "We don't want to do that anymore. Give us the money back." And we'd have to go find another way to maintain positive cash flow. So, this is a critical one for us. This particular agenda item allows the TPA to function independent from county influence and to be fully accountable to the full TPA Governing Board. I hope I clarified that well enough for everyone, but if you have any questions, please shoot them at me.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Federal grant monies are cut and eliminated all the time. What happens if your grants are cut after monies have been spent? What happens about the reimbursement?
Great question. First of all, government moves very slow, even when government appropriations moves, are changed, that changes move slow. Second, we've been around for 40 years, continuously funded through these federal grants by federal highway and federal transit. And third, those are formula funds. They're not discretionary grants that we have to apply for and compete, and we might lose. They're formula funds given to our planning area because of our population and because of the amount of gas tax revenues that our area generates. Now, if, that being said, I have no reason to believe the revenue will go away, but if the overall federal funds go away, if the federal government were to say, "We don't want to fund transportation anymore," then I would reasonably expect that they would not fund transportation planning anymore. I'm less than 1% of the overall federal budget, the dollars they give to MPOs around the country to do planning, but as long as they're going to have funds to build things, they are going to pay local entities to figure out what to spend those dollars on and to give these local governments a voice. So, I have every reason to believe that these funds will continue into the future, but if the federal government decides not to fund transportation, then my agency really has no reason to exist. So, we would refund your contributions from the reserves that we have available, and we would close up our shop.
And we already have a 40-year, we already have a 40-year plan.
What kind of reserves do you have available?
Right now, we have, I want to say we're at about $500,000 in reserves.
Any other questions?
Comment?
Go ahead.
It sounds to me like it's just, if we need to separate the TPA to benefit the local municipalities, I only care what's going on in the four corners of this city, and I don't think we should be under the influence by county. It's almost like a little, an abbreviated version of Home Rule. So, if we can make sure that if this program's going to work and it's going to benefit the municipalities better than being under the influence of Big Brother, then it's something that we probably need to do for the vision of just our community. So, that would be my statement on it at all, as far as it sounds like it's going to be a sound program. We've already got great leadership in it. I know you've been, you know, involved in it for a while. Maria is a great voice for the city, so it's probably something that we need to do to make sure the city goes the direction we need to go for future, just like we're doing everything else.
Any other questions, comments?
It wasn't mentioned, I guess, that this will be coming from the unassigned reserves, but our unassigned reserves are pretty healthy at this point, and we should be able to do that without a problem.
And the $6,000 a year that the city gets reimbursed for staff, it's not going to be that complex, I wouldn't think, utilization of maybe a boardroom, what have you. So, it's almost, it's almost like a 2% loan we're giving you, right? And when that comes, it goes back into the unassigned reserves as those $6,000 a year, will that just go into a general fund, or, I mean, it's not a lot, but...
The money would just go back into the general fund revenue pot, and the effect on unassigned reserves would have to be determined at the end of the fiscal year, when everything's closed out.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we are done with discussion. Motion and a second, please.
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 40, 2018.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Nick, for taking the time to present to us.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, if I could say just two more real brief things. One is, your staff has been fantastic to work with, both Allen and Kumra and your manager, and very great attention to detail. They've ensured everything is just in the way, written just the way it should be. Second, I want to make sure that this council is aware that right now, the leadership on the governing board of the TPA, Mayor Marino is our vice chair, County Commissioner Hal Valashay is our chair, so you are in a uniquely well-situated position within the TPA Governing Board because you have both leaders representing your part of Palm Beach County. And I would just want to say, at the end of the day, our mission is to plan, prioritize, and fund transportation collaboratively. So, I'm not trying to say, "Let's make this a city-county conversation." We want to all move forward in lockstep to accomplish our shared initiatives, but we definitely want to ensure that all of our members' voices are heard and allowed to advance our transportation fund initiatives.
And a reminder that transportation isn't just automobiles.
Yes.
And also, we are going to be having, hosting some workshops in the fall, so I'm assuming that you'll be available to be a part of that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Nick, very much.
Thank you again.
Okay, moving on. Resolution 42, may I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 42, 2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a security agreement with the school board of Palm Beach County, Florida, acting under the 2016 Palm Beach County Law Enforcement Agencies Combined Operational Assistance and Voluntary Cooperation Mutual Aid Agreement to provide municipal police officers on non-charter public school campuses, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. Hi, Chief Shannon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Once again, Clint Shannon, Chief of Police. Ron, did you want to go into this? This is what we spoke about at last council meeting with the school district of Palm Beach wishing to contract with, I think there's 11 different municipal agencies, to provide police officers in the elementary schools within our city and their cities, effective on August 13th at the start of school. This was all born out of a mandate under the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Act by the governor to have an armed presence in all schools in the state of Florida by the beginning of this school year. The school district police department is in need of hiring about 75 additional officers. They're unable to accomplish that, obviously, by August 13th, so they have reached out to many of the municipalities and asked for some assistance. They would provide reimbursement of an overtime rate to our officers, and they've asked us initially to staff four elementary schools in our city. Since that time, I've had some discussion with them, and they've asked us to staff an additional fifth school, which is Eisenhower near Cabana Colony, which touches, I think, our school jurisdiction and has many of our residents' children, children within that school. So, this is a contract that's been reviewed by legal staff and sent back to them. There are some details to be worked out with some appendixes, but as far as the contract itself goes, we're working on an average overtime rate that they're going to, that they would reimburse the city, but this is where they stand right now, and they're obviously under a very fast mandate to get this accomplished by August 13th.
Thank you. I'll bring it back for discussion. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution 42, 2018.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes. I'd like to speak in support of Resolution 42. I think there's no question that we need to provide police officers to protect our children in our elementary schools. Therefore, we need to pass Resolution 42, but I think we need to do more. I made the following proposal to the city manager, and he conferred with Chief Shannon, and we would like the city of Palm Beach Gardens to provide Palm Beach Gardens police officers in all of the schools in Palm Beach Gardens, elementary, middle, and high school. And the reason this proposal makes sense is, first, God forbid there's a catastrophic emergency, it will be the responsibility of our police and the Palm Beach Gardens Police Department to react. It would be better if we already had the officers in the schools who are familiar with the schools and ready to react. They'd be in the best position to coordinate with our police department at a moment's notice. Second, our police officers are some of the finest police officers in the nation. I'm very proud of our award-winning police force, and we would like our police force to protect our children. Third, the school district is desperately seeking police officers, and by giving them back the police officers that are currently in our schools, this will help them alleviate their need, and we'll have our highly-trained police officers protecting our children. Fourth, many of our police officers live in our community and send their children to our schools. This proposal would give them the opportunity to protect their children from harm they'd be protecting, interacting with, and providing guidance to the children in our community. Fifth, our police force is well-trained in how to protect and prevent crimes before they happen, and how to respond in the most severe circumstances. And finally, our police officers work in the community and are familiar with the community. They know who the troublemakers are. are, and this may also be a way to prevent crime before it happens. For these reasons, I ask the city manager and the chief to explore the possibility of our officers protecting our children in the schools in Palm Beach Gardens at a cost that's mutually beneficial to all parties involved. Now, the only hurdle to this program would be if our police force is depleted by the Sheriff's Department. If we're understaffed, we won't be able to accomplish this objective. So hopefully, this won't occur. But for me, education and school safety are paramount, and having our city step up and be one of the first cities, possibly the first city in this county, to step up and protect our children, and I believe this is something we definitely should do, and I hope you all consider it.
Thank you, Matthew. That was very well said. Thank you. And we just, funding is an issue. But we are, anyone else have discussion or comments?
I have a couple of questions for chief. The officers that would be covering the five schools, this is overtime, and we talked about this a little bit today, but for the benefit of everybody else, they're not officers that are retired or coming in after working long days. This is on their time off. They would work the whole shift. They wouldn't be piecemealing shifts, correct?
Yes. Yes, Councilwoman. For the most part, it would be generally on their days off. We do have policies in place that govern maximum number of hours or breaks that they need. We're not going to overwork our officers. But it is at an overtime rate. It's a seven-hour workday in the school, six hours and a half an hour overlap on each side. And, but they are, they are our officers who would be working extra above and beyond. But again, it's governed by policy, so we're not going to overwork our officers.
Barring us losing any officers to the Sheriff's Department or otherwise, would we have the capability at this point to cover other schools other than the five elementary schools?
I think that's kind of yet to be determined. One of the reasons that we are entering into this agreement with the school district on an overtime basis is, once we enter into this contract, we are going to mandate that we have an officer in those schools. So we can do that by, by policies. We can mandate that we have an officer if it's an overtime rate. If it was a detail or an extra job rate, we could not. I think it's kind of yet to be determined. As you know, Palm Beach County is only one of five counties in the state of Florida that has a school district police department. So, and as you know, they have a new chief, which has only been in place, I think this is his second week. Chief Kitziro, which we have a very good working relationship with, we're yet to meet with him on, on this, on this specific contract. However, I certainly, when we do, we can echo the sentiments of council and we can explore that. Right now, I think it's kind of too early to determine whether or not we have the resources that we could cover those additional schools.
Mark?
Well, there has been discussion with the school board and the county sheriff about policing all the schools, but I know that that's on hold because, again, there is their own department. I just wanted to touch on, yes, you have a good relationship with Chief Kitziro as a past chief of police of Jupiter, so that's good. My only concern was, and you answered it yesterday, is that, you know, police officers are very well-trained, but of course, dealing with children and dealing with student interactions is sometimes different and make sure that our officers are prepared to handle some of those complications that middle school students sometimes have.
We currently, I mean, we are currently in the schools, in the private schools, and occasion in the public schools. So officers are well-trained in every area, even in dealing with, with children, with the students, with the parents. We are going to be undergoing some additional training on some of the school district's policies prior to us, us engaging in this, in this endeavor on August thirteenth. But for the most part, our officers are fully capable.
Carl?
If I may, just to sort of bring this back a little bit, we've had the discussion with, with Councilman Lane, I have. And, and I requested that he bring it to you all for your all's consideration here tonight. And if this council wishes us to have that conversation with the school chief of police, we will, we will have that conversation. At the same time, we will have to evaluate our ability to provide that service if it's wanted. But that's a complete decision of the school board, police. So, so far, it's a conversation. Until this council directs me, then we'll be okay if you give the direction to have that. And at the same time, we'll have to evaluate if we have the resources at the time to be able to effect those changes if those changes are agreed to by the, the school board's chief. There's a lot of ifs there, so.
Thank you, Ron. Carl?
Well, and adding on the city manager and Matt, we also have the mutual aid agreement. So even though we may not be staffing a, a school that may be slightly out of our jurisdiction, we can also be the first responders to that school and effectuate protection and action as quickly as if it was one of our officers in one of our schools. So Matt, I mean, even if we don't, we don't put an officer in those additional schools right now, we have the ability to respond to those just like anything else, correct?
Yes, Vice Mayor, we would be the first responders of school without doubt. And I echo the sentiments of, of Councilman Lane with the equipment, the training, and the resources that our officers have. I, I fully agree, we're second to none. So, but we would, Vice Mayor, be the first responding officers to schools that, that are in our city anyway, and just outside of our city.
And even though we don't, we may not have the ability to expand on the seven, five schools that we're proposing at this point, the officers, by show of hands or whatever, they're excited to have this sort of detail and participate in, in this because we, it's a voluntary detail, correct?
Well, correct. I mean, if we enter into this contract, if we cannot staff the schools, it's going to be a mandate by us. But I don't, I don't expect it would get to that, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Well, I do want to say, you did say this was reimbursable by the school district, correct, the five officers?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Okay, so this is not at a cost to us.
Correct.
But this is actually to a benefit to us because it puts police officers that are familiar with the schools who probably have, who, we're probably going to have officers who are volunteering because their kid is in the school. So this is a really good program for us. What I'd like to do is, one, vote on this resolution, and, two, at the, with the agreement of the council, talk further about having our officers in all of the schools. But we need to take one step at a time, and right now, we need to make this motion and this, this vote, take, take this vote. Okay? Mark, Carl? Pay attention. Okay. Do you want to vote, then? Okay, make a motion. Someone make a motion.
I actually have a motion and a vote on, a motion in a second. Before you call a question.
Perfect. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So the council would like to see the city manager do some research about funding the, I believe that is the consensus of the council.
I'm on board with that.
Yes, I believe so. So if we could...
We will make the inquiry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is city manager evaluation, council action and discussion. Any, any discussion? Any comments? Well, I, I'll say this. I'm going to start. I don't usually start, but I'm going to start. Our city manager is the best city manager in the state. I appreciate him being here. The staff that he has put together over the last nineteen years are family. They talk to each other. They do not operate in silos. This takes a manager who allows them to do their jobs and do their jobs well. You see them with smiles on their faces all the time. When I am at meetings that are either county-wide or statewide or some even national, and they talk about problems that people have in their cities, and there are topics on how to deal with these problems, I look and I say, "We do not have these problems in our city." And that has to do with leadership. And so my evaluation is, the city manager is, please stay as long as you possibly can. I'm done. Anyone else?
I just want to thank city manager Ferris for the excellent job that he continues to do managing our city and our staff. As I've come to know you better this year, I can honestly say that you always put the city first when difficult decisions need to be made. And you often think outside the box when it, when you're confronted with a challenge. You'll stand up for the city and her residents, to the county, to the state, to the other municipalities or agencies whose philosophies, methods, or intent are different from ours, and put the best interests of Palm Beach Gardens first. In the rare case when you're less enthusiastic, when I first approach you with an idea that comes out of the blue or might create more work for the staff, you always hear me out and you always follow through with it. And most times, it happens in a way that's even more beneficial to the city. I think you're always looking towards the future. You won't allow the staff to settle on projects that don't meet the future goals of the city. I'm proud that you and the chief have, have moved to enable the city to enter into the contract with the school district. I'm excited about the early funding of the Phase One expansion of the fields and the way you were able to figure out a way to get that done for District Park and about the solar panels at Russo Park, the solar trees at the water park, and the electric cars, and our move to sustainability in, in general. Our city's financially stable under your stewardship with the help of Allen, and you continue to make sure that our resources are used only when needed and replaced as soon as possible. So I look forward to continuing and enhancing our relationship moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay, I will be brief. Our city has one of the best police forces in the nation and one of the most highly decorated fire departments in the state and the nation. Our parks and rec programming is exceptional. I continuously receive compliments about the work that our planning and zoning department is doing. Our finance department does an excellent job. The vision for this city and for all of these departments comes from one person. That's our city manager. None of this happens by accident. It's all done with planning and foresight, intellect, and wisdom. And it's my pleasure to work with our city manager, Ron Ferris.
Thank you. Mark?
I'm going to take a little bit of a different tact because sitting out there for many years prior to joining, I always remember Eric sitting in this chair, and he would always have his hand like this, and he would say, "This guy is great. You're lucky to have him." And then Joe would be sitting over there somewhere, I mean, and he would say, "I don't always agree, but I'm always happy that he's on my team." And now, sitting on this side, you know, they also used to say that they would have evaluations on a regular basis, on a weekly basis. And I've had an ability to sit with, with the city manager weekly, so we would have some conversations. And he's not an easy guy to get to know. But at the same time, you know, part of the job on this side is to represent the residents, not to represent the city manager. We're kind of the conduit in between. And, you know, you want to be friendly, you want to be respectful, you want to generate a relationship, and it doesn't happen right away. And you have to keep that separation, and that's very important. It's not always easy to do because you sometimes have this impression of what you want to do, but you have to remember that there's been somebody sitting here for a long time that's created an environment that's unique. I own a business, it's not nearly as big as the city, but I, I understand where the thought process comes. And when you see the camaraderie of, of the department heads and the staff, it doesn't happen by itself. It's true. It's not, it doesn't happen by accident. So I have a ton of respect for the city manager and I, you know, we continue to sometimes look at each other funny when, when things come up. And I think it's just because we're still learning how to communicate, but it's a good thing. And I'm happy that you're here and, and you don't create a city like this for no reason. So I, I look forward to continue that relationship. We're not going to be buddies, but we will be very respectful and friendly, and that's the key. So if anyone has any questions about that and the residents, please feel free to ask because I'm very happy to have you here.
Thank you, Carl.
One of the, one of the things, one of the hardest things for this city manager to do is to juggle our five personalities. And we are a super diverse council, and we've been tasked with continuing the vision from the last council. And we knew the term limits was such a sweep. It could have possibly changed the whole city to go a different direction. Instead, because we all love the city, or we wouldn't be here, Ron loves the city, staff loves the city. Look at what we've done in just the couple of years that we've, we are now maturing as a group. What I see around the community is the, the people are giddy about the parks. I still get compliments on, on the Pocket Park on Holly Drive. Ron and I discussed in length pretty much every detail of his evaluation for an hour or two on this particular topic for this particular council meeting, and we went over everything. And with his leadership and my personal opinion, me being an employee of the city and now trying to do my part on this side, you know, I need Ron's guidance and his, his intuition and his knowledge on the, the inner workings of the city and what direction. And then I always bring back to him community input. And it, it does tweak, and we're seeing our projects now that you and I have signed off, finally, you know, we're separating ourselves from the last council. And without Ron, being able to keep this city going the direction it's going, just thank God that, you know, he's here, staff's here, and I think we got a pretty good council, council body that supports our staff and city manager. And I'd like to keep it going that way. So thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Carl. One last thing I would like to say, and I believe this happens with every other council member, is we receive phone calls and emails from constituents with problems and complaints and not always recognition, and as Mark just said, requests. And we, as a council, can't take care of those requests. So those requests have to be passed on, and we pass them on to Ron, who then passes on, passes them on to the appropriate staff. And it is usually something that is responded to in twenty-four hours. So I, I commend Ron and staff because that takes a lot of work, but that takes also a lot of comfort with each other to get things done. So I applaud all of our staff. Thank you very much. Okay. We are going to move on now to Resolution Twenty-six. May I please have the clerk read the title? And I only have one card here on Resolution Twenty-six.
Resolution Twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, calling on the state of Florida and the federal government to pass meaningful legislation aimed at reducing gun violence in America and helping prevent future occurrences by enacting common sense gun legislation, enforcing legislation already in place, enhancing mental health programs by providing additional resources to identify, diagnose, and treat those suffering from mental illness, implement and fund enhanced security measures for public schools and other community institutions, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Thank you. I have one card. Ms. Magnuson? You're, are you coming up? Okay.
I need to give my name. Okay, Paula Magnuson, three one six seven D, Gardens East Drive. I'm just going to read what I wrote, make it easier. First of all, I want to thank the council for making the prudent decision to table the sensitive topic to be discussed in a pragmatic manner rather than an emotional state of mind. So I thank you for that. In reality, we are surrounded by violent movies, violent TV shows, violent music, and violent video games that have desensitized our youth on a sanctity of life as well as bullying, the breakdown of the family unit, and a lack of spiritual foundation. This atmosphere creates wounded person and, of course, mental illness. Many states require extensive background checks for gun ownership. However, they are met with the obstacles of the federal HIPAA laws, which protect their personal health and mental health issues. Just my observation. We need to address the violence that has plagued our country for decades. Until you do that, gun regulation really won't solve anything because the criminals will always have guns and criminals always commit crimes on law-abiding citizens. I'm a mother, a grandmother, and a great-grandmother, and have a family of military heroes. My dad, my brothers, my son, my cousins, my nephews, who all served. And we hold fast to the Constitution and our flag that they fought for, as well as the First and the Second Amendment. As it was written by our brilliant forefathers, a well-regulated militia, being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to care, to... the right of the people to care, to, to keep a bare arm shall not be infringed. And that's what I stand on. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. May I get a motion in a second for discussion?
I'll make a motion to discuss Resolution 26, 2018.
I'll second.
Thank you. And I don't normally start, but I am gonna start with this. We were given some information. We had a resolution. We all have read the resolution. The items that were requested by council and by our constituents. Age of 21, three-day waiting period, law enforcement in schools with training, school hardening funding, mental health, ban on bump stocks and military-style weapons, sensible gun legislation, background checks, enhanced penalties for violators, NICS funding, mental health funding, enforcement of laws already on the books. These are in, the, these important points that we all talked about last meeting are in the documents that we have in front of us. Items we can't control. And Paula, you must have been reading my notes here because items we can't control. We can't legislate morality. We can't legislate common sense. We can't legislate honesty. We can't legislate people to abide by the law. We can't legislate Hollywood from not producing violent movies that show no consequence at all for all the killing and the blood and the gore. We can't legislate video games that do the same thing. So I am in favor of the, the resolution as it is written, the title as it was changed to encompass all of these issues. And I think we're probably going to have a, more of a discussion. But I am starting the discussion in that manner. I think that we have written a resolution that we, we cut and paste. And Max, you did a great job last month understanding what we wanted, what we didn't want. And you were writing as fast and furious as you possibly could to get this put together. And when I read, and I have everybody's resolutions, I have Mark's suggestions, I have Rochelle's suggestions, I have Matthew's suggestions. When I read what we have in front of us, we have effectively put together a resolution that is a common sense resolution that is meaningful. And on that note, I will hand it off and I will start with Rochelle.
I want to echo your sentiments. I think we were put in a very difficult situation to begin with by what the state has determined our way of action has to be. And coming into a difficult discussion, not knowing where anybody stands and until we figured out how to start and actually discuss it in, in, in some form where we could come to agreement, I think we did a really good job last week. It was not easy. You did a great job of, of guiding that. It was difficult. I agree that what we came up with, it is good. And there were a few problems with it that are technical that I picked up that I just wanted to go over. One of them was the whereas number five and whereas number eight were identical. And what was missing was the one that we put in that was Mark's number 10 and the second to the last one on mine. It corresponds with our asking the state to get rid of the preemption laws. It starts with whereas, let's see, Florida is the only state to hold election officials financially accountable. That was the one that was supposed to be in instead of the duplication under eight. It was Mark's number 10. So it corresponds with one of our sections on, on the thing. So it was no change. It just was left out when all this was cut and pasted on, on Max's end. As a healthcare provider, I'm still having problems with the language that is on Section 4. I have a proposal to change it without changing what we're asking for that I would like to run by council. It's that enhanced mental health treatment centers that I'm stuck with because it really doesn't mean anything and to have something that doesn't. So what I would suggest, can we go with something like, "Supports enhancing mental health treatment through increased funding and resources to better identify, assess, and treat those with mental health issues in our schools and communities at large." That way, we're not prescribing the fix. We're just asking for the funding and the resources for those who are on the front lines and have to figure out what that fix is going to be. And that we support stronger laws to enable law enforcement to better protect our communities from those who pose a threat of violence due to mental health issues or some other evidence of risk. And the risk, I mean, is fine. It's just...
So please, please read that again. You want this to read?
Instead of enhanced mental health treatment centers and stronger laws, what I'm proposing is, "Supports enhancing mental health treatment through increased funding and resources to better identify, assess, and treat those with mental health issues in our schools and communities at large." "We support stronger laws to enable law enforcement to better protect our communities from those who pose a threat of violence due to mental health issues or some other evidence of risk." The council strongly agrees, dot, 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 dot. So it shouldn't change what we're asking for, except that it's not the centers, it's the, the treatment that we want. And it, it, it makes more sense in terms of, to me anyway.
Can we bracket that so we can agree on it instead of changing the whole section? And then having to debate it again next month? Because that's a lot.
Yeah, unless Max can type it in and bring, unless Max can type it in and bring it up for us on here. I sent it to Max, he can copy and paste it. He's got the wording because I sent it to him in an email.
I don't have it.
Yes, no, but if he can copy and paste it and put it on our thing, then you could see the language on that one. Because I, I sent it to him.
I'm waiting for the program to open.
I tried not to change what, what, what the thought process was behind that one at all.
And yes, that's a good question. What do the rest of the council members feel? Are we, any issues, Carl?
Other than because there's no reference to funding in here, which we didn't have talked about last time. And there were several things that, that's why I was asking if we can bracket it and agree, then let's move on from it so we can get this off.
Why? I, so I wondered that.
Where we want it to be.
Right. And we can add the word funding to, there was one place where the word funding would change. We had it on one of them.
But it's not in four.
No, it's not in four. But we had it on, um, hold on, wait a second.
Really don't want to bring this back again. So hammer this out as quickly as possible so we can...
That's what Max just said. Oh, on number five, on whereas number five. If we put, "Is supportive of additional legislation and funding." Because this thing that... Well, this kind of, this adds the funding here that will match with the funding later.
Okay, so that's where you want funding?
Funding after additional legislation and funding on the whereas for five and then as part of the paragraph that Max has. Because what the state has done is they've made this a one-time thing. And the, the school district and the mental health agencies are all going ahead and making planning. And they don't know that they're gonna have the funding again next year. And I just wanted them to know that we support continued funding for this.
I agree and I don't disagree with you. But what I'd like is because we're directing Max and he's typing as...
Yeah, that's just, right.
I want him, I want us to do one word.
Right.
You know how I feel about one word changing entire definition of an entire paragraph. So if we can do it one at a time because we jumped from four to five and he can't type that quick.
No, I wondered, I thought he was trying to pull up what I had sent him on five. Yeah, so then you can see it.
Well, I, I can't put it on a screen so you can see. I'll have to email it to, to our IT director and then he might be able to do it. And then I'm gonna have to pull it down off the screen to amend it and then...
Can you do that, Eric?
How about I get it, can we print it out, the old-fashioned?
Vice Mayor, is your, is your microphone on?
Carl, is your microphone on?
It is now.
So the city of, let me go back. We are on page one of the resolution. We are on the bottom whereas. This would be the whereas that deals with the section.
Yes.
The whereas should read, "The City of Palm Beach Gardens is supportive of addition, is in support of additional legislation and funding that enhances the capability of..." You did not want mental health institution.
That's fine in this part. That's fine, mental health, that's fine in this part. It was on the, the other one.
From the five of you, what I'm supposed to be changing right now? Because you're hopping from section to section to whereas to whereas. I really need you to stay on one thing at a time if you want me to type it in.
How are we with four? Because that's where you started.
Well, can Max finish the other, the other one? Or you want to go?
All right, hold on. Whereas, where are you, Max? Are you in whereas number five?
I thought we were at Section 4.
Okay, so let's go to Section 4.
Let's stay there, Carl. Carl, yeah, let's stay on Section 4.
"The City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens supports enhancing mental..."
That's where her, that's where the situation changed is. Let me read it, please. And then I'll, and as I read it through, then we'll see if I'm capturing the change.
Okay.
"The City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens supports enhancing mental health treatment through increased funding and resources to better identify, assess, and treat those with mental health issues in our schools and communities at large." Is that period?
Period, and then it goes to, "We support strong."
Well, I have, okay, then you want this additional sentence as well.
And the additional sentence is?
"We support stronger laws to enable law enforcement to better protect our communities from those who pose a threat of violence due to mental health issues or some other evidence of risk."
Are we done with four?
That was, that was it. That was the change.
Let me add this in and then I'll try and read the whole thing for you. Okay.
And this was something that was in, I'm not changing anything, Max. I'm just commenting. This was something that was in everybody's, last, last month was in everybody's discussion. This was in, in, some form or another was in everybody's discussion. So I think we should all be on board with this.
Okay, so this is the way it would read if, if you accept this amendment. This'll be the entire section. "The City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens supports enhancing mental health treatment through increased funding and resources to better identify, assess, and treat those with mental health issues in our schools and communities at large. We support stronger laws to enable law enforcement to better protect our communities from those who pose a threat of violence due to mental health issues or some other evidence of risk. The council strongly agrees with the newly created Section 790.401 Florida statutes that grants law enforcement officers and agencies the ability to petition the court for a risk protection order that would allow said agency to retain seized firearms or any ammunition if the person poses a potential danger themselves or has made a credible threat of violence against another person." Period.
Done.
Done. I make a motion, have somebody make a motion because I can't, that we changed Section 4 to read like that.
I'm gonna motion.
You don't even have to make a motion. It's fine by consensus. Once you guys are good with this, then you can vote on it.
Or it's done?
Or it's done.
Or it's done, then we can go back to...
So now we go back to whereas number five, Max.
We're adding one word.
So it's at the bottom of page one, okay?
So whereas, "The City of Palm Beach Gardens is supportive of additional legislation and funding." That's two words.
Yeah, and funding is two words, yes.
Okay, I'm trying to find.
That's all right. It's the last whereas on page one.
Right.
End of the first line. It, it's line 38.
Okay. His computer's running slow.
Yeah.
I hate that, Eric. Can you make it go faster?
It's a PC, let's go to Max.
Oh, God.
We are going to get through this.
I only have a few.
Because we are all on the same page.
Absolutely.
Right, where it says, "Is supportive of additional legislation" and then...
And funding, we're adding.
And funding.
Right.
That enhances.
Fix it and read it.
I changed the, this tense of it so it reads better. It says, "The City of Palm Beach Gardens supports legislation and funding that would require NICS background checks prior to the sale of any firearm."
That's the wrong one.
That's the wrong one?
We're number five.
No.
We should be number five. Which, which one are you looking at? It's the whereas that was the duplicate with number eight.
We're on whereas, line 38.
Right, and, and, okay, I've got it now. I understand what you, what you, what you want. What I did is I, I deleted number five and left number eight.
No, you got to delete number eight.
So it's the same one. It's the same, same whereas, it's just...
Yeah.
So it says, "Supportive of legislation and..." And I actually, now it reads that way. It says, "Whereas the City of Palm Beach Gardens is supportive of legislation and funding that enhances the capability of mental health institutions..."
Perfect.
"...to provide proper assessment, treatment, follow-up of those with mental health disorders who exhibit violent tendencies or threats of violence."
What else?
I have a question. All of them start with, "The City of Palm Beach Gardens is, the City of Palm Beach Gardens does." Number four says, "The City Council..."
I changed it.
Okay, so that now says, "The City of..." Okay. I didn't know if there was a reason for that. Okay. Let's see. Other change I had was, we're starting with the beginning. Whereas the recent tragedy at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. It was not...
Where are you?
The very first one, number one whereas. It's not the last. Can we do and, "At Santa Fe High School in Santa Fe, Texas"? Just add that after Marjory Stoneman Douglas since it happened.
What line are you on?
Number one.
It's the first whereas.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, you are on line one.
Line one. "After Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School and at at Santa Fe High School in Santa Fe, Texas" because that happened afterward. Unfortunately, after we started working on this.
I, actually, I don't think...
Or do you want to keep it?
I want to leave it the way it is.
Because it's local.
This is, this is, Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School is a Florida issue. It has, it is what our laws have been changed to reflect. So I think, I think this reads as it should read.
Okay.
Okay, so line 19, we're leaving alone.
That makes sense, that's fine.
What else? Anybody?
Did, did we add back that other one instead, Max? That, that got deleted by mistake that wasn't put in?
Clarify that one, please.
Mark's number 10.
I don't know that...
Okay, that is the one that should say...
Mark, what was your?
It's a section, it's, it's the...
Florida is the only state to hold elected officials financially accountable.
For legislative act, charging them both in their official capacity as individuals with fines up to $5,000. Dollars, reimbursement of attorney's fees and possible removal of office by the governor and making Florida the toughest state in the nation when it comes to policing city and county rules on firearms act. That was what was supposed to be in there instead of the duplicate.
Yeah, but do we need a whereas to define section?
Yeah, if you have a, if you, you gotta put in there why we're putting that section.
Are we putting in that section?
The section is in there. The section is in there. The section nine is in there. We're just giving the whereas that supports the section. We're asking for the state to stop with the preemption. So this says, "We have the toughest rules in the country" and that's...
I let him fix the whereas for nine, so we'll pause if we can. And then once he catches up with us.
And then I'm...
Maybe we should give him an evaluation on dealing with us five too.
And I'm...
Right, that's in section nine. It's the section. So you want to add the whereas.
We want a whereas, right. Want a whereas that goes for that section.
Do you have a preferred location for that whereas?
No.
No.
Okay.
Might as well add it.
Before the last, how about that?
Okay, I'll put it right before the last one.
That's fine.
Since section nine is towards the last, second from the last, well, third from the last. Can I just make a comment while Max is fixing? Because I'm not gonna ask you to change anything, Max. So go ahead and see what you're doing. Thank you, Rochelle, for clarifying. I just wanted to thank Max for his patience in all of this. Maria for taking the time and bringing everyone together last meeting. I know it was tough. We were... We were getting tired and yet you, you allowed it to happen to our, our residents and our neighbors to do this. This may not be perfect. But my comment to, to the city manager on this is I didn't want a vanilla resolution. I didn't want something that was just, we want better gun control. That doesn't mean anything. And the rush to, to pass some resolutions in the past from some other cities, in my opinion, were somewhat vanilla. We are the largest city in the area, well, not the largest city, but one of the leading cities in, in, correct, one of the leading cities in Palm Beach County, especially northern Palm Beach County. And we get the, the, the questions from the residents. And people look to what we're gonna do. And people ask us what we're gonna do. And whether we like to or not, some of the things that we have to discuss are not always city-related. And even though our charge is to, to represent the city about the growth of the city and how the city is handled, these are issues that might be social, this might only be a resolution, but it still sends a message as to whether or not we're listening or not. And I think it was important that we came up with something that I thought was, was pretty strong. Now, whether or not this goes anywhere, I don't know, but I think it's gained enough attention. I know Sarah's over there checking her phone, I'm sure. But, but hopefully that the conversation that we've all had is going to bring enough attention to the matter so that when other people read it, if they do, they'll have something to say, well, Palm Beach Gardens did something different instead of a vanilla resolution, so...
And our resolution can be a template for other resolution, for other cities to look at it and, and bridge what we've been doing for what, three months now? Needless to say, the countless conversations that we've had.
I know Wellington's looking at us already.
We don't follow, not even this group. So Mark is right. A lot of cities look at us and say, what are you guys doing? You know, so...
So that was my comment, and thank you all again for coming tonight. It's not nearly as late as it was yesterday, but I think we're ready to finish this, finish this up.
Okay, I've added the whereas. It's in there, it's right before the final whereas.
Do we need to read it, hear it?
Please read it, Max.
Certainly. Whereas Florida is the only state to hold elected officials financially accountable for a legislative act charging them both in their official capacity and as individuals with fines up to five thousand dollars, reimbursement of attorney's fees, and possible removal from the office by the governor, and making Florida the toughest state in the nation when it comes to policing city and county rules on firearms. And, and then we have to find a where as.
Thank you. You know, we may not all disagree on all the whereas's clauses and all the sections and all that, but, you know, what is important to us is the safety of our children and our communities. And what we've done here is put together a clean, sensible, unemotional, because it has to be that, policy statement. And I believe it covers everything that we all requested last month. So if there is...
There's one more.
Oh.
One more, little one, little one.
No, Maria, I'm gonna have to change as...
And, and I think, uh...
Is that the one?
I think it might be the same, section eight, to take out the word control.
No, you can go ahead and say that mine is gonna refer to the...
Line, section eight, line three at the end, it should be violate and or circumvent gun laws. We don't need gun control laws. We just need gun laws. Just take the word control out.
I don't even know where we are.
Third, section eight, third line on the right, last word, last word of the third line.
Circumvent gun control laws?
Just get rid of the word control. Just circumvent gun laws.
That's fine.
And the change that I'm asking for, I already went over with Max last week, and I went over it with the mothers a couple of weeks ago, and it was also in section eight, and it had to deal with the exemption of the ban of sales and all these things to people under the age of twenty-one. And in the, the law, it specifically refers to as an exemption to active duty, military, law enforcement, and reserve personnel. And instead of having a normal person read this resolution and then have to...
Clarify?
Clarify at another section, I just would rather put that in there so they can see there's an exemption for other, under people, people under twenty-one. I think the mothers are agreeing on that.
If they're military.
Yes.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
The exemption reads right out of the statute.
We did the research on it, too.
So if, if you wanted to add it at the end of section eight, right where it stops, under the age of twenty-one, I would recommend adding a comma and it saying, "Except in the case of a member of the military or a law enforcement or correction officer when purchasing a rifle or shotgun." The law, the state law as amended, changing the, the, the legal age to own a, a rifle or shotgun from eighteen to twenty-one, does specific, that's the language right out of the statute that does exempt members of the military, law enforcement, correction officers.
And that's why I wanted that in there.
Is that, is that active members of the military?
The state law says, "In the case of a member of the military."
Is there a difference?
Yeah. I mean, if you're, if you're a member of the military, you're active.
You're active, so there is no difference then.
I mean, you're, you're a member of the military. I mean, and even reservists, you know, when they're, what they call an active reservist mean you are a reservist and you can be called up. You're a member of the military.
I am good with that.
Me, too.
Anyone else?
No comment.
Good. Okay. So, any other changes anybody would like to see? Max, I think you did a great job of putting together our crazy thoughts last month.
Thank you.
And I would, if we are all in accord, everybody has said their piece. We have a good piece of, a good resolution here in front of us, and I would like, we have a motion already, so I would like to take a vote if that is possible. All those in favor of this resolution, as it has been rewritten in several sections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I thank you very much. Ladies, I thank you for being here and showing your support. You can clap, it's okay. I know I did, I know I did send an email out with procedure where you're not supposed to clap, but in this instance, it's okay if you do. I hope you understand why I sent out that email, okay? And I hope you, did you all get it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you guys good? Questions now?
No.
Too late.
Too late for questions.
Oh, yeah, that's right, too late, you're done.
We're done with questions.
Sorry.
Okay, so we, I believe that the only thing left on our agenda is the city attorney's report. Does he have one?
The only thing I was gonna inform the council of is the, um, the status of the Rustic Lakes annexation challenge. They had, they had untimely filed a petition for writ of certiorari to try and challenge the involuntary annexation. The circuit court, even though they, they had, they were supposed to, under the rules and under the statute, they were required to file that petition within thirty days of adoption of the ordinance, the passage of the ordinance that occurred in January. They did not file that until ninety-nine days after the adoption of the ordinance, sixty-nine days beyond the jurisdictional deadline, yet the circuit court issued an order to show cause, and I still can't, perplexed as to why. And they issued an order to show cause for us to respond to it. And rather than respond to it, I filed a writ of pro, a petition for writ of prohibition to the Fourth District Court of Appeal, seeking the Fourth District Court's influence on this to prohibit the circuit court from taking jurisdiction because it was never timely invoked. In order to act on an item, a court has to have jurisdiction over it. And if you don't timely invoke the jurisdiction, the court is then prohibited from taking any action. Then inexplicably, they, uh, they received our petition for writ of prohibition and then dismissed it. And in, in their dismissal, they actually did me a favor. I was very appreciative of the fact that they actually wrote why. And they cited a piece of case law. It's the Mandico versus Townes Construction case. And then they said that prohibition is the inappropriate method to divest a court, cannot be used to divest a court of jurisdiction. However, they overlooked the Peltz case that was decided just three months later by the Florida Supreme Court. Mandico was a Florida Supreme Court case as well, which said that prohibition is exactly the right method to prevent a court from acting outside of its jurisdiction, which is the fact pattern we have here. We're not trying to take the jurisdiction from the, from the circuit court. I'm not asking them to do that. I'm telling them, I'm asking them to prohibit the circuit court from doing, taking action over something that they do not have the jurisdiction to act on. So this was the prime example of a, of an appropriate time to file a motion for rehearing, so I did that last Friday. And pointed out the Mandico case and what appears to be their misapprehension or misapplication of that case, and then their inadvertent overlooking of Peltz. And so we are now currently awaiting that. As a side note, one of the, one of the re, the justifications that some of the people in Rustic Lakes have cited as the reason for them to want to oppose the annexation is that they feel like they, they were going to lose their constitutional homestead protection since they have over a half, all those lots are over a half an acre. That's not the case. The Florida constitution specifically says that if you are invol, if you're, you cannot be involuntarily divested of your constitutional homestead protection merely because you were annexed into a municipality, because you were included into a municipality. So that's kind of a red herring that, that, that's, they're not gonna lose that. So their, their property is still protected from creditors, just like everybody else in, in the city that has a half acre or less. Even though they have five and ten acre lots, they're still fine.
Until they sell.
Until they, until they sell it to the next person. If it transfers in accordance with, uh, with regular homestead rules, like, because the whole idea was that if you, if spouses, if one of them passed away, the house, it transfers, it goes down per stirpies to your heirs, then it continues to, to enjoy that homestead protection. If you did a arms league transaction selling it to another person, then you wouldn't. There are other instances where you may be able to maintain it, but that's really for a, a real estate, some specializations in real estate law to opine on.
So the, the, so the community as a whole is still actively pursuing the lawsuit, even though this has...
I, I don't really know if it's as a whole. I, I, I was informed that they had a POA or HOA meeting a couple of weeks ago where they were soliciting support from the residents within Rustic Lakes to help fund the lawsuit, asking questions and whatnot, trying to get them to get on board. I do, I have been informed that they have subsequently removed everyone from the board of directors that supported annexation. They also, about a week ago, when they filed their writ, the petition for writ of cert, they actually, they also inexplicably attempted to file a declaratory action contemporaneously with the writ of cert, the petition for writ of cert, which you can't do. One's an, an appeal, basically. A writ of cert is an appeal. You're seeking a review of a lower tribunal, and you, the circuit court reviews that sitting in their appellate capacity, where a declaratory action is a de novo action, which is a, it's, it's your first, it's your first kind of, uh, opportunity to seek relief.